...of the Reno City Council to order. Jamie Jackson, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, my mic is kind of fussing with me. We'll now observe a moment of silence. Roll call, please.
Shivi, Breckus, Zadra, Delgado, George, Jarden, Kachal, absent.
Public comment. Mark? Mark, you're up first.
Did you say me?
Yes, I did.
Howdy, people. Hi, people. Okay. I want you to...
Mark, identify yourself.
Mark Markel, concerned Reno resident. I think that's it, huh?
That's it.
Okay. I'm brain damaged, people. I want you to understand. So I don't know. I don't... That's why I'm stuttering. I don't know. Anyways, my name is Mark Markel. My mission in life is to educate students and the community about what happens when you get in the car with somebody who's drunk. I'm reading from this because I suffer a traumatic brain injury and I get off track. Through Mark's pad, People Against Drunk Driving, I help to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences I have. At 24 years of age, I was drunk and I got in the car with a drunk driver. The driver crashed the car. It rolled eight times and the car landed on my head. I was in a combat for about a month. And once I regained consciousness, I had to learn to talk, walk, and even eat all over again due to my traumatic brain injury. It's hard for people to understand me when I talk. I'm trying to slow down. Okay, everyone here, you interrupt me. But due to my injury, it's very difficult. I felt I survived in order to be able to tell my story and be an example to others. Parents, don't drive drunk with your kids in the car. Kids, don't... Kids, listen to your parents, they're young, and listen to your teachers. They just want to make good citizens of you. They're there to help you. I never listened to either one, and look what happened to me. My life has completely changed as a result of getting in the car with that drunk driver.
Thank you, Mark. You had very good timing, Mark. Thank you. Good message.
Thank you.
Christopher Corbett.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Christopher Corbett, Northern Nevada Chapter of Panda, People Against the National Defense Authorization Act. Victory in Albany, New York. On October 7th, 2013, the Albany, New York Common Council unanimously passed Resolution 80.92.13, becoming the first city in America to prohibit indefinite military detention without charge or trial specifically under the 2012 National Defense Authorization Act to declare it is not a battlefield and resolve that its citizens and residents are not subject to detention under the law of war. Unlike in California, Alaska, and other states that purported to block the NDAA but only require the state to stand down and allow federal officials to implement it, nonetheless, Resolution 80.92.13 recognizes the application of the law of war to residents and citizens of Albany to be unconstitutional. Now that they know that this is unconstitutional, every peace officer, elected official, or other person who takes an oath to the US Constitution in the city of Albany is required to interpose against those attempting to implement military detention or the law of war in Albany. Under the Constitution, instead of mere noncompliance, this resolution requires inner position to protect the rights of the people and stop the federal government from implementing military detention in the city, period. This is the strongest piece of legislation in the United States to date to prohibit the indefinite military detention power in the United States. 11th Ward Councilman Anton Konav, who introduced the resolution, said indefinite detention for any reason is unconstitutional and cannot be allowed. At least here in Albany, we believe in those liberties our armed forces fought so hard for, end quote. This resolution was a collaborative effort between Panda, the Patriot Coalition, Project Salam, Jesse Calhoun, the Occupy Albany Civil Liberties Initiative, 518 Liberty Action Alliance, Campaign for Liberty New York, many other organizations, and numerous citizens from Albany and around the nation who flooded the council with calls, emails, written letters, and showed up for the vote. Apparently, unlike the Reno City Council, the threat to civil liberties posed by the NDAA is well within the scope of the Albany Common Council. I applaud the Albany council members for upholding their oaths of office and taking action to preserve and protect the rights and freedom of their constituents. I regret that I cannot say the same for this board. Today, I'm delivering Panda's current model resolution, the Restoring Constitutional Governance Act, which is substantially similar to the resolution passed in Albany, New York. I leave you with two questions. One, do you believe that a person has a right to a trial? And two, do you believe that Reno is a battlefield? I ask this board to reconsider its position with regards to the NDA 2012 Sections 1021 and 1022. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Levatter.
So this is the card issued by the state. As you can see, I'm a non-growing patient. So that means that I can't grow for myself, but I do have a caregiver. And the caregiver visited me the other day and... God bless America. I have lived to see this day. I have lived to see this day. Thank God, free at last. Oh, free at last.
When I was very young, I was drawn to healing arts and medicine. And over time, I became more interested in botanicals. Late in high school and early in college, I became aware of the medical uses of marijuana along with the industrial uses and hemp seed as nutrition, and started to become aware of the hypocrisy around this plant being illegal when it has so much to offer our species. At that time, I became a medical marijuana advocate. I linked up with an activist group at Indiana University and started to do more with educating the public on the safety and various uses of marijuana. Later on, when I was in medical school, I actually became more interested in the scientific research around it and started to be really blown away by what I was finding. I think any scientist that hears about one substance that can purportedly cure or help with so many different conditions has to be suspicious of it. And at that time, my second year in medical school, and I started looking deeper into the research, it just kept coming. There was a huge body of evidence already, and there was more coming out all the time that, yes, this one medicine can really do all that people claim it can't. It seems to be the most useful single remedy for the most people for the most conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Diney.
I first read about it for Nevada MS Magazine.
Sam Diney, Encyclopedia Reno Government. Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate. I'm Sam. And here comes Esquire Campbell over there, right on cue. At any rate, I totally agree with that gentleman right there. The state of Nevada has made it legal to sell... to set up shops to sell legal marijuana. And this council right here, last month or last week, voted to not allow those shops to open up even though they are totally legal. And I sort of took your side a little bit. Maybe we should look a little bit longer. But I said you should put a time limit on it, say three months down the line, bring them back on. Instead, you just left it open-ended. By the way, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border, and even for the right for a citizen to sit in his house and maybe consume some marijuana. I have to give you a disclaimer. I do not use marijuana. I prefer tequila. Always with... Nice chortle. Always with a designated driver, though. By the way, I noticed the mayor's not here, and I used to wonder, when the mayor was not here, we should go... Somebody who's running the meeting should tell the folks out in the audience where the mayor is. But on the other hand, it doesn't really matter because according to what I read, the mayor is no more important than the other... any other member of the city council. At least, that's what the career politicians are trying to get everybody to believe and think the city attorney's taking that side, too, but I don't want to put words in his mouth. At any rate, maybe the mayor is more important, maybe he isn't. He wasn't even important enough for you to tell anybody where he was. You know, I see where Spanish Springs was putting together a video for some rock and roll song out there, and they were on TV this morning, and they did a really pretty up-and-walking good job with that video. I mean, a really good job. They should be congratulated for doing such a great job. I think their next project should be to go to YouTube and pick off one of Sam's 487 three-minute Youtubes up there, and they could probably put together a real good video with that. And I'll even provide an original song for them, played by the Two Wild Yankees Band, my little band. You know, I often come up here and criticize the vote-stealing traders, the vote-stealing traders, for not only stealing their votes, but once they get those stolen votes, they distribute them in such a bizarre manner. You would think if the vote-stealing traders had the control of the votes, the stolen votes, they would give them to some qualified people. I've been coming to these meetings since 1994. I've attended 99.7% of the meetings, and there's only one thing. There's only one thing that's helping save Reno in spite of the stolen votes going to the wrong people. The one thing that is saving Reno is that we have... Reno has such great workers, all the way from the fire department to the law enforcement and just to the regular people who do the everyday logistical work that keeps this city running. So despite the vote-stealing traders and their traitor is treachery, Reno is still running.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment forums, we'll move on to item A5. Mr. Manager, any announcements?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any announcements today.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. The pulled items today is K.A., public comment, of course, we just had, was at noon. Proclamations, there are none. Presentations, we will have the Wolfpack Athletic Bands, an economic development update from TMCC, and a presentation from Project Solution. Our public hearings at 12:15 or later will be F1, 2, and 3. F4 will be heard at a time certain of 3:00 PM this afternoon. Are there any changes to the agenda other than those noted? If not, approval, please. We have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Minutes from the meeting of September 25th. Ms. Breckus.
I have a few comments, changes. I'd like to note on page 18, item J1, when we were discussing the park maintenance standards and operations, I think the third paragraph on page 18 did not capture some of the direction that I felt was given in our kind of free-form discussion, was that any considerations of services reduction to the facilities of parks would also involve looking at, on a level field, with programming components of the Parks and Recs Department. And so, maybe Madam Clerk could take a look at that and ensure that that was captured. And then, I'd also like to mention on the evening item, the public hearing we had, item M2, there's numerous references to something, a number 462, but there was really needs to have NRS 462 in front of it. I think it reads a little bit unclear without that. And furthermore, the second paragraph on page 39, there's a sentence that's very unclear, and I think that... and it had some comments I was mentioning. It said... it's a nonsensical sentence, and so I have a correction that it was really, if a special use permit was not under the interpret of applicability to parcel mapping. And I would put that... those terms after the word "available." Otherwise, I don't believe this sentence makes sense. So I would propose those changes, or we can ask the clerk to clarify and bring them back for our next meeting.
Okay.
We can make those changes.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
The body's fine with that.
A motion for approval with that modification?
Move to approve with those changes.
Motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Cash dispersments. Motion for approval? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no proclamations. The Nevada Wolfpack March From the Arch. Ms. Jarden.
I'm so excited to get to present this today. Will?
Yes.
Come up here. Very excited to be promoting University of Nevada's marching band today and ready to present a rather large check to you. And, you know, we as a council have certainly embraced the fact that we're not just a town with a university in it, but we are a university town. So we're very glad today, before the band comes in, to present you with this check.
You say a couple of words?
Hi, my name is Will Plank. I'm the Director of Athletic Bands at University of Nevada Reno. On behalf of the band, I'd like to thank Mayor Kachal, the Reno City Council, and the city of Reno for this donation. I can't really emphasize enough how much gifts like this allow the band to continue moving in the positive direction that we're currently headed as we grow, as we want to do more and more things. Like anything else, it always requires more resources, and without gifts like this, we wouldn't be able to do a lot of the exciting things that we are. This is my... I'm in my third year now as the Director of the band, and I've been really inspired over my time here to see how much cooperation and support there is from really the whole Northern Nevada community for the band, and really looking forward to continuing that cooperation in the future. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Ro Lazzaroni. I'm the Vice President of Community Outreach for Alumni Association. So I'll just kind of give you a quick overview of what the march is and whatnot. First of all, Alumni Association partnership with the Associated Students of the University of Nevada are excited to produce the inaugural March From the Arch presented by Barrett Gold on Friday, October 25th. This is a family-friendly event that encourages students, alumni, and the community to come together and celebrate this college talent in our institution. I hope all of you will be attending the event, and we're very thankful for Mayor Kachal as he agreed to help kick off the march that evening. The evening starts with a social at Harrah's Plaza at 5:00, and then participants will gather under the arch at 7:30. And the parade will start... marchers will follow in behind the floats, and it will head up in at the university quad where a carnival will take place. Carnival includes games, bounce houses, food trucks, DJs, and more. At 9:30, President Mark Johnson and the Wolfpack Coach Brian Polian, along with several players, will address the crowd, and we're very excited. We're going to have this lighting of the wolf event, which is... we're very excited to have. Alumni Association, ASUN, would like to thank the mayor, the city council members, the city staff for all their hard work and support. This has been a vision for a little over a year that we've been talking about this, so we're really excited that it's finally come together. Specifically, we'd like to thank you for promoting the Wear Blue on Friday's campaign, sponsoring over half the city fees needed for the homecoming march, and changing the original parade route so it now goes straight up Virginia Street to campus. Mayor Kachal has agreed to kick off the festivities from the arch. We look forward to bringing the university and the community downtown, and there are several university representatives that are here today to show their support, including Heidi Ganser. So, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can we get the check back up here and get the mascot in, and we'll get a nice shot with the check? Yeah, we want to get the council. Can council members stand... Not only do you look great, you sound fantastic. I have to say, in addition to this, the mayor did want to pass along a challenge, and the challenge is to all the businesses in the... actually, in the entire community, to also adopt Wolfpack Fridays and show your university and college spirit by putting your blue and silver on on Fridays. So he did put that challenge out, so I'm carrying that message forward. In addition, all of you, I hope, will show up on the 25th under the arch at 7:30. The arch will be blue, and we'll march up to the university, and I hope to see everybody there.
We'll be there, and we need to make sure we get the mayor to do that march with us, you know? He does the Veterans Day Parade. It's the same distance as up to the university, so we'll just be right behind him, making sure he does the entire...
He gave me the commitment that he was going to do the entire march, so we're excited to see everyone there.
Good deal. That's great. We should start off with the band more often. And as a proud alumna, there welcome any time. Go Nevada.
Yeah!
Okay, D2. Dr. Sheen? Is she here?
She is. For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. Before Dr. Sheen speaks, I just wanted to give a little preface, both for the council as well as the public in terms of what this item is. This is, as we come out of the recession and some of the economic hard times we've had, we really are trying to focus and use this time with the council to shine on some things that have been very successful and that we do in our community that many people may not know about. Now, obviously, Truckee Meadows Community College is well-known, but sometimes we don't stop to really understand the many things that happen up there. So we're very privileged to have today Dr. Maria Sheen to talk about what's going on at Truckee Meadows Community College, and this is a very important part of our community, a very important part of what makes us Reno, and also is a good example of what we're trying to achieve by having this item on the city council agenda. So with that, I'll introduce Dr. Sheen.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to make a very brief presentation about our capacity, the capacity of Truckee Meadows Community College to serve our community. Really appreciate that introduction. Thank you so much. So, let's see. I don't know how to advance the slide, though.
They'll do it right here. She's got it.
I just say, advance the slide? Okay. Thank you. That works quite well. So just a little recap. Over the course of a year, we serve about 28,000 students, and 16,000 of those students that we see every year are in our credit programs. I'm going to talk about that in just a second. And then, 12,000 of those contacts with students are non-credit programming, and I'll talk a little bit about that. We have five different sites serving the community in every possible way, but today I'm really going to talk about economic development, how we impact the workforce with the kinds of programs that we do provide. 39% of our students, the first in their families to graduate, and 95% of our students stay local, so that's a wonderful thing. When they receive their training, they stay with us. So now, I'm going to talk a little bit about the programs that we have to prepare students for the workforce. Okay, so there are a number of them, and we're very proud of being able to match the kinds of training programs we have with the kinds of workforce needs that exist. So we look at our CNA program. It's a very quick program, less than a semester, and we have about 60 students a year in that program, and we really fill the employer demand in that area. The CNC program, and I won't go through all of these, but this one was featured on 60 Minutes, and it is the response to the manufacturing community saying, "Give us this kind of training program. We don't want an associate's degree. We want a 16-week, short-term, compressed, very intensive programs that gives us... a program that gives us this particular skill set." So that's what community colleges do. We're very responsive. We can do so quickly, and our goal and our responsibility is to listen to what the workforce needs are and to respond appropriately. So with this program, the CNC program, we have local employers who are providing internship programs for our students and allowing our students to get that hands-on experience, and we have just about 100% placement rate in that program. Our radiology technology program is one of the most successful in the country. We have about 100% placement rate with that program. Our nursing program as well. The dental assisting program. Most of our programs have about 100% passage rate, the nursing program especially. Our dental assisting and dental hygiene program. Those programs are the only of their kind in Northern Nevada. those programs are the only of their kind in northern Nevada. We're proud of our ability to serve the workforce needs of our community. So, now let's take a look at additional courses of programs that we have. And these are career and technical education, that's CTE. So, we just had for culinary program, our accreditation and the team left with one word, exemplary. And as they reached out to the various restaurants and casinos where our students work, they said they could not get the supervisors and employers off the phone. They had that much to say about how happy they were with the product they received from Truckee Meadows Community College. And that is our goal, is to listen to what the employers are saying and in areas where we need to improve, we make the necessary changes to improve our programs. When the legislative session met about two or three years ago, that was a session or two before this last one, there was a question about how we use advisory committees for all of these technical and career opportunities for students. And so, we took a look at the advisory committees and these are the local employers telling the community college how to design curriculum. So, it absolutely is a match to their needs. We looked at the record of the meetings and took a look at what kinds of recommendations had been made over the years. In over a three-year period of time, we had implemented about 85% of the recommendations coming from the advisory committee. So, we are responsive to what the employers are saying to us. We're really proud of this next program that we, you've probably heard quite a bit about it. We've been very successful in getting support, local support, for the nursing program. We have 100% passage rate over the past three years. And what this slide is looking at is the transition for students to a BSN. So, the associate's degree in nursing is no longer just enough for students. So, what we have is a smooth transition to the BSN at the university and the state college. So, we're a little ahead with our agreement with the state college in the south. Nevada State College is already accepting students and we're underway with an agreement with University of Nevada, Reno. We also have non-credit courses. And in our non-credit programs, just a look at a few of the kinds of programming that we provide. And so, this gives you a sense of what the community members are saying they want as well as what the employer community is saying they want. So, these are certifications that are designed especially to meet a skill set that the employer is looking for. And then we have customized training. And so, this is when an agency like Join comes to us and says, "We want this kind of training. We want it delivered at this point in time, this many hours." From the educational side of things, we know pedagogy. The employer knows what skill sets they want to be taught. And together, I think we make a great partnership in providing the kinds of customized training that employers are looking for. We've also embarked on the Life Skills College and this is an opportunity for recent high school graduates to experience the technical barriers that we have. And some of them you've already seen. And often, our high school students don't have enough of exposure to the kinds of programs that are available at the college. So, we are and have just completed a very successful five-week program, completely supported by non-state dollars. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. But what we found out was that this is something that high school students need in order to make a successful transition if they're going to move into career opportunities. We also have a remediation project and that is a collaboration with the University of Nevada, Reno, and the Washoe County School District and TMCC. Remediation is a huge issue around the country and for us, it is a significant one. And other states are looking at this. In fact, in New York, the mayor has decided that it is such a significant problem that there's a line item to address remediation for the local community colleges. They are now spending millions of dollars to support the community college effort. And what it has yielded is a grad rate of 20% to now over 58% and growing. So, we know what to do. The problem is funding the kinds of wraparound services that are so significant to make a real difference in student success. I'd like to talk a little bit about the challenges that are facing us right now. So, there's a new funding formula. I think you're mostly aware of that. And it does some interesting, not interesting, but it provides some challenges for us. Let me say it that way. So, the new funding formula does reduce the bottom line to TMCC for state funding to 31%. So, for any business trying to deal with a 31% reduction in funding, that is significant. Two-thirds of our funding come from the state. So, when there is a two-thirds reduction, that's significant. One-third comes from the students and we've tried to keep those student fees as low as possible. We'll be discussing student fees because we can no longer say that we can protect students from fee increases, not when we're facing at TMCC a budget reduction of $2.5 million. So, the board has directed us to become more entrepreneurial. And entrepreneurial we are becoming. And so, we are looking at all those opportunities for private and public partnerships. And I think I talked to a local business a day about what can we do for you and how can you please help us. And so, we're looking at grants as we have never looked at them before and we have been extremely successful. We have about a 78% success rate with each overlooking our submissions for a year. And it has been $7 million over an 18-month period of time that we have been able to bring to the institution. Certainly, we're looking at private giving and I talked about a partnership earlier that would leverage the funding between the institutions. No one of us can go it along any longer based on the funding that we have. So, some of the recent grants look like this and we're very proud of being able to embark upon building our first building by ourselves. And so, that is the Pennington Building. That's the $2 million gift that is under the recent gifts. And it's a $10 million building. It will allow us to co-locate on the Redfield campus by Mount Rose, a beautiful new wing for our nursing program. It's $2 million from our wonderful supporters of the Redfield Foundation. We have a $10 million project and we're just about to announce another gift that will take us to halfway to our goal of 10 million. So, our goal in all is to continue to provide the level of capacity that we have in order to train the workforce and contribute to the economic development of our region. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Sheen. You are doing an incredible service to our community. Absolutely. And your responsiveness is just amazing. Okay, Project Solution.
Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you for allowing us to present. My name is Paul Kinzett. I'm the Executive Director of Project Solution. We're passing around folders of information on us and we're going to go through some of that. And if we can turn on the overhead, that would be lovely as well. So, last time we were here, this was back in May when the city council and the NAB from Ward III awarded us $2,465,000 which allowed us to repair our water fountain and put on safety lights outside the building and repair some toilets for the kids at Project Solution. We have a two-and-a-half acre facility where we service homeless and at-risk kids here in Reno. It's located off of Vassar and Kitske. This is in your packet. So, what I'm going to do is just give you a quick update on what we've accomplished since the last time we were here and then I'll let Tisha and Chris expand into some of the other services. So, since May, when we came in, we were working on a summer camp program, which Tisha's going to dive into on what that entailed and who our partners were. And we were working on a hip-hop program. Since then, we've also built up a really strong partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. We're a very small nonprofit with three employees and myself as a volunteer executive director. So, we don't have that many resources. Our biggest asset is the facility that we have, which is, I guess, a two-and-a-half acres in an area that's quite underserved. So, we've built up a really strong partnership with Boys and Girls Club. They've provided us training to our staff. They give us, they help run background checks for our volunteers to make sure we have a safe place and those volunteers are trained. They help us provide daily meals to all kids. During summer, when the kids weren't in school, we were providing two-and-a-half meals of breakfast, a lunch, and a snack. And now, we're providing just an evening dinner meal. They've helped us develop a game room where we have different, we have a pool table, foosball table, lots of fun stuff for the kids. So, they've been a really big asset and that's something that we've been developing and look to further develop throughout the next year. We've also expanded our board. We've added on three new members. We have Jim Anis from Applied Staffing and the Applied Companies, I'm sorry, he has three companies he owns. We have Mike Hicks, who's from First Independent Bank, and we have Allison Wren from the Wren Group. And so, they've recently joined on our board to make sure that we're going to be a sustainable and growing organization. I want to talk to you guys a little bit about the statistics of our membership. So, I've been, I went to middle school and high school here in Reno, but if we can zoom into this top one. And I've gone to the university and when I came to Project Solution, that's where I really saw the diversity of Reno. You know, at Project, we have kids of anywhere as young as six and as old as 26 and they all come in for recreation or tutoring services. But there's so much diversity and there's so much peaceful interaction among this age group. And so, through this chart, you can see we have everything from Native Americans to Hispanic to Asians, Caucasians, African-American, and mixed. So, it's a very diverse population and they love interacting with one another. We don't get fights at our facility even though we are in a gang area. We don't get tagged in our building because the kids know this is their safe place to go. Since insurance is a hot topic, right now, the statistic for our members is about a little over 50% of them are insured and the 46% of them are not insured. And again, some of those that are insured, it's not the ideal. It's not the insurance that maybe, you know, some of us have. Chart that I really want us to focus on, if you can get it here, this is the annual household income for all of our members. Over 50% of our families make less than $20,000 a year. So, we're running a gigantic facility for all of these kids that don't have a place to go and their parents can't afford to send them someplace that, they can't send their kids someplace else for tutoring, for to get food for their families. So, they're coming here because they don't have someplace else to go. And even if you look at the statistics, it's, let's see, it's 42% for families that have between $10,000 to $20,000 of income. We have about 12% of our kids, their families make less than $10,000 and 17% make $20,000 to $30,000. So, a very, very large component of our kids are just, they're there because they need a safe place to be and because they need just the basic resources that you and I take for granted. So, when we offer services, we always ask the families to make some sort of investment into their child's education somehow to say, "Okay, this service, it's after-school care, you know, we've been charging," we had set the price at $45. Nobody could afford it at $45 a week for a child to get the type of service we were providing, which was with partners from UNR and other organizations. And so, when we saw that nobody could afford it, we adopted the Boys and Girls Club policy that we don't want to turn somebody away just because they can't afford this service. So, even if that meant that we were going to go into the red to provide a service, we were willing to do that. So, right now, for our after-school care, no one's paying $45 a week for a child. They're paying anywhere from $2 to $12 and that nowhere cover our costs. So, we've been continuously providing services that the community needs, not always having all the funding to do that. And luckily, sometimes the community has stepped up. On the original paper that I gave to you guys, you can see some of the foundations that support us. We luckily were able to get some funding to sponsor our summer program. We are very, very thankful for Lifestyle Homes Foundation. They have donated in kind over $300,000 of the facility, which we used to be paying an enormous amount of rent and a mortgage at. So, now, they've given us this great facility, which they've helping us maintain. And some of these other foundations have sponsored our after-school program and our summer camp. So, I'm going to let both Tisha, Tisha talk about the summer camp program and our after-school care program as she's been running those programs. And then after that, Chris will be talking about the hip-hop event that we talked to you back in May and our dance program.
Hi. So, my role at Project Solution is to run all of the programs that we have for the children. We did the summer camp. We have the after-school. And now, we have a fall camp coming up for the children when they're off school for a week in October and that comes up next week. So, a lot of our children, as Paulkin said, they can't afford the services even at the minimal amount. So, $45, most camps would not charge that amount if they're feeding the kids all day long. They're providing fun, safe, educational experiences for them. And our real goal is to keep the children safe, educated, fed, and having a good time. My background is in education, so I'm able to align our goals with that of the school district to make sure that all of our children are college and career-ready. 84% of our members live below the poverty line. They also, we have families that live in motels. We have families that are in transition. They don't have a home to stay at. They stay on someone's couch, in someone's garage, maybe not even in a home, maybe on the street. And we even have parents that, you know, they don't have cars. They walk to pick up their kids. We have a mother that comes every single day in a taxi to pick up her children because she wants them to be at a safe spot and she knows that we're a good facility for that. So, we have some great community members that have been involved with us and I'll name a few of them. Obviously, the Boys and Girls Club is highly involved with us. We have the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts who are involved all summer, Nevada Bug and Butterfly, the UNR Engineering Department, Black Rock Solar and Virilutions, Society for Children's Writers and Illustrators, The Valley Arts Project, Art Town, Pie Pie Pie, just to name a few. And recently, we have one of the professors who is in charge of the Agriculture Department at UNR trying to help come into our facility and help our garden program. None of these organizations get any payment for working with our children. They're there every single week just because they know that our facility is offering something great for these kids that otherwise they would not be able to afford. They know that these kids need extra help since they already have a lot of barriers to push through in life. So, they're there every week volunteering their time to make sure that these children are highly educated and that they get experiences that, you know, make them well-rounded citizens. So, also, I think just the fact that we offer these enrichment and extension activities shows our commitment to the children's learning, to their education, and making sure that they are citizens that are promoting and helping our community. So, every week, our goal is to make sure safety is number one. We're making sure these children are fed. We do homework with them every single day. Otherwise, they would go home. They would not have their homework done. They would not produce the grades that the schools and the teachers are looking for. And the main reason we do this is not because, you know, we're going to get paid a high amount for it or not because, you know, it feels good to us, which it does. But our main goal is really to make sure these children excel at school and in life so that they can grow up to become community leaders and have positive impacts on our society. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now, the hip-hop king.
Yes. This on here? Yes. Hi, guys. I'm not going to lie. I'm just going to say I'm a little nervous. I don't do this much. But I just want to say, my name's Chris. I'm 25 and I'm a dance director and building manager at Project Solutions. I know we came here before and we were talking about a hip-hop program. And I'm actually mentoring one of my, I mentored one of my dancers to do this. He's been in my dance crew for like four years. And well, this event actually turned out to be a success. We had live graffiti, live canvassing out there. We had people from different parts of California come. We had people from LA, San Francisco, Modesto, Stockton. And these were all popular break dancers. Right now, one of my kids, he's actually a local break dancer here. He's only 20 and I mentored him doing this dance program. So, yeah, it turned out we had about like 150 people, close to 200, and it was just- So yeah, it turned out we had about like 150 people, close to 200, and it was just a true hip-hop event. We had Holland Project come out, help us out, the Reno Gazette-Journal helped us out, Art Town helped us out, Reno Tahoe Tonight helped us out. It was just very successful and everyone enjoyed themselves. And the cool part was networking with these dancers because the dancers didn't know that Reno had a dance community. So they were all like, hey, can we do a workshop? I'm like, yeah, definitely. So I'm staying in touch with these guys. And then also, I helped the city of Reno and Boys and Girls Club build their dance program, and now I'm helping Project Solutions, so I'm very excited. We are slowly starting with our dance program. We actually have 20 kids, so they range from eight to 20, about eight to 20. I'm also, we also got to teach up in Spanish Springs High School, which is awesome, so we might be going there. We'll also be targeting other high schools as well to expand our dance program. I just have a few quotes from volunteers that work there, parents and dancers as well, if you guys don't mind if I read them. "Project Solutions is a very good place for kids, safe environment, we love the kids, we pray for it to be established for the kids because we don't want to leave." And that was from a volunteer. "Project Solution is a place where the children can come and be safe, have people that care and want the best for them." And here's another one. "Project Solution is a safe place for kids to hang out, the staff is great and they love the kids, Chris works well with them and they love, they love them." And this is from a parent. Parent said, "Project Solution is the best thing that happens in our community. It accommodates my family while we are working. It's critical to keep this facility open in so many ways." And I have one from my dancer, this one is actually inspiring. Like with my dance crew, I always tell them, "We dance to inspire, not to impress." So that's my little motto for the dance crew. So she said, "Hey, Chris, thanks for the motivation, I really needed it because I like to give up a lot and no one really pushes me to keep trying harder." So what I teach these kids in our dance crew is, you know, teamwork, chemistry, being leaders, and just never giving up on their dreams. This is just another outlet to express themselves. I saved a couple of lives. These kids need that outlet, you know, and I look at it like not all kids are athletes. And so this is another way to express themselves. So, yes.
Thank you.
And I hope you guys continue to support us. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank you guys for your kind generous donation to help maintain our facility and help us stay open. The area, like, we'd love to have volunteers. I hope everybody got inspired by Chris and Tisha. You know, we're, we're a resource that the community really needs where we're located. The areas that we want to expand to right now, we're a safe place, we want to develop business classes, we want to teach kids, have them continue with their education, not just middle school and high school. We want to make sure that they, that they are empowered in whatever areas they want to go into. So we're developing some business classes with, with the university that we want to teach the kids on how do you become an entrepreneur, how do you start your own business, or how do you just stay in school? So we'll be doing that next year. And the areas that, that we really need help, you know, we're mostly volunteer-run. We have three staffing, we're a lean, lean organization. We still need help with, you know, paying our utilities. We have a very large facility, which is great for us, our winter's coming. We use about 600 gallons of heating oil every month to make sure that it's not freezing in the facility, it's not, you know, comfortable at 80, but it's not freezing, and that costs us anywhere from $2,000 to $4,000 a month, you know. It's like, we'd love to get some help from the community to help donate some fuel or help come in and work with the kids, you know, let us know how you can help out. Some of these, some of the community has stepped up, we just need the rest of the community to keep pushing forward with us. Again, I want to thank you guys for, for believing in us and supporting us, and we hope to get more support from the city council in the future.
Great, thank you, Palkin. You guys are really filling a need, and I think you got the message out clearly. There are futures, so we need to support them. Thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda, and I'm actually going to pull items E5 and 6 for discussion. Anyone else?
Maybe I'll also pull item E4.
E4.
E11, please.
Anything else? And a, a motion for approving the rest of the agenda? Motion and a second to approve the other items, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Items E5 and 6. Jody.
Yes, ma'am. Jody Royo-Goodwin, Housing Neighborhood Development Administrator, for the record. Do you want me to go over what?
Yeah, I, would you please? The reason why I pulled it is because we don't often see CDBG under this context, and it is specifically designed for this, but we, we haven't experienced it as much as we have some of the other more visible types of, of projects. So if you could just kind of briefly talk about that and how important it is, the, the role that it is fulfilling, since we've had to really change and modify our redevelopment and economic development activities throughout the last several years.
Okay. So there are two contracts before you. One is with NLRK, and this is for a new program that would be a first-ever. Historically, we have utilized the money primarily internally through our redevelopment and economic development staff. We allocated approximately $200,000 per year for a number of years for the purpose of job creation. That had varying degrees of success, less so as staffing changed through the redevelopment agency. We lost key staff members that were specifically experienced in the underwriting of economic development loans. And then, now as you know, we don't really have any economic development staff, sorry, Maureen. And then, so this process, this project itself is specifically related to incentivizing and providing resources to startup businesses that are more diverse than normal traditional loan services through the Community Development Block grant are. So we're talking about more microenterprises, some job creation. But it's the business that, in this case, would specifically be working with approved accelerators that'll be identified through the policies and procedures and may be added as those accelerators expand in the community. So they'll be provided with support services through that process, but then we can make assistance available up to $20,000 to help them move on to the next level. So we're talking more tech grants, or tech businesses and that kind of thing. The second contract, I feel really loud, is for the more traditional program, and this would be a contract with Valley Economic Development Corporation, who actually does this in multiple states. They're headquartered out of Los Angeles, and they do the underwriting, they process the loans. This one will do a lot more of the job creation part of it, in addition to some microenterprise, both are eligible, both are eligible under CDBG. They will ensure that the documentation for the eligibility and required for the HUD side of things is created upfront. Our funds will actually be used to leverage $2 million in private investment, invest $200,000 into a loan loss reserve to, to access $200, $2 million for the community and for qualified businesses. In addition, we'll be providing up to 100, up to $75,000 in this contract for a, a person to more efficiently manage the process as opposed to it being a staff person. It will be their staff person that receives the training specific to economic development, loan underwriting, that type of thing. They will be housed in City Hall, so there will be a, a close connection with city operations, CDBG operations, that kind of thing. I hope that helps, and I'll answer any questions.
Bill actually wants to add something to that.
For the record, excuse me, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. Part of the reason why this is different is because rather than the city unilaterally moving forward with the program, we started in conversation with Edon, and Edon, for those of you who've been following it, has really more recently moved into the area of entrepreneurial projects and small-scale startups. So I think it would be very beneficial, since Doug's here, maybe he can speak a few words about where we're going with this, how this happened, and what we're trying to do.
Yep, yep. And I filtered through the request to speak forms to pull his up front for that very reason. So why don't we go there next? Doug Irwin.
Thank you very much.
Doug actually should be in Las, or not Las Vegas, San Francisco on a very major priority project for Edon, but figured this one was even more critical in state. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely believe in this, and I'm glad to be here to, to provide my support. So, you know, I thank you, Madam Chair and distinguished members. I think, again, I'm here to express my support for this use of CDB funds as it relates to spring entrepreneurial development, specifically item E5 as it relates to the accelerator programs. I think many of you probably heard the saying, mighty oaks from little acorns grow, and that's really what this program is about. This program is about providing the resources or nutrients to take an entrepreneur's idea and grow it into a fledgling business. And many of you know that that first, that first critical funding is, tends to be the most difficult for companies. But we also know that money alone is not going to help these companies unilaterally. So the brilliance of this program is that it forces the entrepreneurs that participate in it to also join an accelerator program that provides key mentorship, training, and education to help increase the chances of success. And one of the things Jody mentioned is it's more diverse. Traditionally, the CDBG funds have been focused on microloans. This is really an accelerator program to target diverse industries like technology, app development, new, different, high-growth, high-potential companies, which is different than the historical use of microloans. Many other communities have these types of accelerator programs. I've got a number of people here today that are going to express their experience going through those programs and the impact it's had on them and their businesses here. But again, so really kind of the three things that are really driving this. A, it provides some early-stage funding for these diverse businesses that are flourishing and growing in our community. But it also will be a catalyst to bring in new accelerator programs in industry sectors where we have existing critical mass. So if we want to grow to advanced manufacturing, we have now a catalyst to bring in an advanced manufacturing type of accelerator program. And then, you know, one of the things from an Edon perspective is we're always trying to recruit. I mean, most of my work is working inside the community, but we are, whenever we can bring in a talented entrepreneur or a startup, we're really increasing the brain share of our community. It's challenging to bring in those types of folks without bringing in programs like this. Company, programs like Techstars, Healthbox attract the talent out of the Bay Area and LA to go to their locations. This type of program finally gives us a tool to help recruit those entrepreneurs and build those startups in our community. And I think one of the things that's so important about this right now is that we're partnered up, the, the person who's set up to run this is also the person running the Battleborn Venture Fund. So the first time in Nevada's history, we have a $5 million venture fund. This really proceeds at, this is the first step, the person that'll be running that will also be running this program, so we'll have great continuity to help our businesses get that education to go up to the, so they can pitch successfully for angels. So, you know, at the end of the day, this is really all about growing jobs in our startup sector and helping attract local talent into the community. And you might ask yourself, well, why is that so important? I think it's kind of, it's somewhat obvious, but the startup sector, if you are familiar with Koppen Foundation, it's the world's largest entrepreneurial think-tank, has stated that all new net job growth has come from startups. And so that's really what we're trying to support here. So I just wanted to thank you for taking your leadership role in, in taking this on and created a new opportunity for a new sector of our economy. So thank you. I'm happy to answer your questions also.
Thank you, Doug. And we'll get to that, we'll finish public comment and then get to questions. James Elste? Thank you.
Good afternoon. For the record, I'm James Elste. I'm the former Chief Information Security Officer for the State of Nevada, where I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Klinger. Nice to see you, Andrew. I'm also the former Director of Information Security for IGT, and I am the CEO and founder of a company called Cognitive Extension, Inc., who produces a web application called Inquiry. I am an entrepreneur, and I know what you're thinking. I don't look like a 20-something-year-old entrepreneur, but I can assure you, I am a 20-something-year-old with 20-something years of experience. 30 years ago, when I started in IT, my first job, I worked for a gentleman who went off to found a second company. And Michael Dell founded Dell Computers 30 years ago. 15 years ago, a couple of guys founded a company and added a new word to our vernacular. That company is worth $300 billion today. If you don't believe me, Google it. In the last 10 years, companies like Facebook and Twitter and Instagram have all reached market caps in excess of $1 billion. These are all startups that didn't exist 10 years ago. So entrepreneurship and startups can have a very rapid effect on our economy. Now, not every startup's going to be a Facebook or a Google, but I can tell you that the economic advantage happens almost immediately. In my company, I already employ an individual who's part of the TMCC program. He's going to graduate in December, and he's starting on a career in technology that he's very enthusiastic about. So we're seeing an immediate return from an economic perspective just by having startups in this environment. And this is part of why we need to, to focus on the accelerator programs and fostering startups in the Reno area, so that we can build an ecosystem to support the startups. Now, I can tell you that, having worked with some of the, the folks in the startup community, I'm at quite a disadvantage. They're half my age, they're twice as smart as me, about the only thing I have going for me is 30 years of experience, and I think I have probably more ties in my closet than the entire group collectively. I would really encourage you to approve this contract because it gives Reno the opportunity to capitalize on the intellect, on the enthusiasm, and on the entrepreneurial ambition of these folks. And I can tell you that you will see very near-term returns that will dramatically affect the economy of Reno. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eric Jennings.
Good afternoon, I'm Eric Jennings, CTO of Pinocchio, a local startup here in Reno. I'm a Reno native, I was born and raised at St. Mary's, born there, raised here in Sparks, went to University of Nevada Reno, graduated from the engineering class there in computer science. Once I graduated, I had to end up finding work elsewhere. There was some work here in the technology sector, but I was very interested in technology startups. And so what I ended up doing was traveling to San Francisco, New York City, Los Angeles, finding work there with, with tech startups. And so that was a fantastic experience for me, but I had to go elsewhere to get that. And that was a problem because being from here and wanting to stay here and having a family here, I wanted to build roots here. And so what, around 2011 or so, I was, provided the opportunity to join a technology accelerator in New York City called Techstars. They're all over the country now. 11 classes or 11 companies were, were chosen from over 700 applicants, and we were super excited, but I had to move to New York for three months. And, and that was, that was simultaneously super exciting and beneficial to my, to my career, but it was also difficult to leave my family and house behind and, and let, make sure everything was taken care of here. That accelerator program was the single largest change in my career from being someone who had to travel elsewhere to work to now starting a company here in Reno, a, a startup company who's, who's in the high-tech sector and is planning on hiring between 10 and 15 people over the next 12 months. We just recently closed a round of funding just under $1 million here in Reno, and we have funders and backers from all over the country. We had a successful crowdfunding campaign as well, where we, where we sold over $100,000 of, of our product before we'd actually even made it. So we showed that there was a demand there, we showed there's a huge amount of growth and potential. That accelerator is what got us there. We had network, we had network connections that we made through that accelerator program. We had friends that we made, colleagues, other entrepreneurs, investors of, of world-class all over the world who met with us that we can still use now and that we did use for bringing that funding here. I, I really want to encourage, as my predecessor said, to support accelerators in Reno. It's the one missing thing that we, we did not have and why I had to go elsewhere for the last five or 10 years. If we had that here and we can actually start mentoring that entrepreneurism here in Reno, it's really going to help us as a community to not have to rely on our mind share going elsewhere and traveling like I had to do. So again, I thank you for the support you've already shown, and I hope that it does go through, and I'd be happy to mentor any of those other companies as they go through the process that I had to do elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Chamberlain.
Hi, my name's Adam Chamberlain. I'm a graduate student here at University of Nevada, and I've seen with economic slowdown that there's an appetite for entrepreneurship at the university. And I think a program like this could really help to push people towards not looking for a job, but starting their own company and moving forward in that sense. And it could really make Reno a destination for startups and bring people in. As Eric said, he's leaving the, the region to find those type of companies, and Reno could really become a place like that. It's worked in other cities and I believe the, like, formula is there. And it's, we have a great university here full of smart people, and they're just looking for a chance to really come out of their shell and get their business off the ground, so. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Colin Loretz. Colin Loretz?
Hello, my name is Colin Loretz, and I'm the CEO of CloudSnap and the founder of the Reno Collective. And like Eric, I actually went to Texas to be a part of the Techstars program as well. And we've been fortunate enough to come back to Reno, but the reality is that most accelerator programs exist to retain talent and, to retain and attract new talent to their cities. And so the program in Austin and New York, they exist to attract new talent to those cities. And so something with like Reno, where we're so close to San Francisco, we're seeing a lot of the really skilled engineers, developers, marketers leaving the university and going to San Francisco, Portland, where they can find these opportunities. And so I was fortunate enough to have the Reno Collective as a kind of anchor to bring me back to Reno after my Techstars experience and since we've raised over a quarter of a million dollars to grow the business as well. So really encourage the support of this contract, contracts, so that we could help to retain and attract new talent here in Reno. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of the public comment forums. Again, the reason why I pulled it is I wanted us to be able to have the, the appreciation for the new direction that we're taking and that this, is there one more? Come on up and you can sign one of the forums afterwards.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm sorry, there's a bit of confusion about my public comment card. I wanted to speak at the beginning, public comment on a separate issue, and then this as well. So I appreciate you inviting me up here. My name is Rebecca Gaskin. I'm CEO and Community Development Evangelist for Pistol and Stigma. It's a community and government relations development firm. And I'm here to urge your support of this. I've been talking with Doug for about the last year in the different contexts about accelerators and the kind of growth that it offers our, our community. I was really excited to hear that you were moving forward with this agenda item today. I've also consulted for a variety of nonprofits, startups, business startups, and this last legislative session represented the Downtown Project in Las Vegas, which I think you know very well what's going on down there. And while this not, is not $350 million that we are investing in our community, I think that the leverage that's provided with this opportunity will allow us to kind of cultivate a little bit of a rivalry with Downtown Project in Vegas and, and really establish Reno as a place for, not only for our own community members to stay, but also as a place to attract talent and retain them regardless of whether or not they're natives here. So thank you so much for, for considering this, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Rebecca. I think it is critical for us to recognize this absolutely taps into our livability and vibrant economy. One more that wants to speak as well. Please go ahead and come forward. State your name for the record.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Lou Torres. I'm Director of the Women's Business Center for the State of Nevada with Valley Economic Development Center. And I just want to thank you for considering this generous grant. The piece that's really important is that this grant provides a loan officer, a person to work with clients here in Reno. We found with the startups and the, the brand-new entrepreneurs, it's important to have that eye-to-eye, that face-to-face contact. And part of Valley Economic, VEDC, what we do is after they get the loan, we're with them all the way through. We don't just give the loan and say aloha. We're there, we're looking at your financials, we do site visits, we're making sure that if they need any adjustments to their business, because we want to see the success. So I do want to thank the city council for this. And once again, that $200,000 real leverage, a $2 million loan fund. Thank you.
Big return. Big return. And that's what, what I think that we're seeing. I've had some conversation with Mike Kuzmersky and Doug about this as part of the whole EDON effort. Doug just does some incredible things. I don't know if you ever sleep with everything that you get done, but the reinvestment back into our community that these organizations are already bringing. You know, one, one business is moving from the collective itself right into office complex just adjacent to practically. They're, they're bringing people in, getting that accelerator program strength and know-how for them, tap them into the financial resources that they need, and they move out into the downtown community, build businesses, put people to work, keep that entrepreneurial spirit going. I just, I'm totally in support of, of both of these items. Any other discussion?
Yes. Well, this is really exciting. I, I love to see this kind of stuff because I know firsthand what it's like when you get startup money and you build a business. And today, you know, I employ 30 people. So I mean, that might not sound like a lot, but you know, I know it's making a big difference in 30 people's lives. And so, but I do want to say, going back to Colin and Eric, being in Techstars, you guys are very humbled. That's a very, very big honor. And it's huge that you guys are there representing Reno. I mean, you guys, that's so hard to get into. So I mean, kudos to you guys. Techstars is amazing. And I really, yeah, I really respect what you guys do, and I think this is a game changer for Reno. And, and this is really something that's exciting to see, you know, a vision, and especially where we've been, you know, with this economy for the last seven, eight years, it's been, it's been really difficult. And so this really, truly is a game changer for our community, and I'm so excited, you guys. I think, you know, I really just commend what you do. So, nice job.
Ms. Jordan?
I have a number of questions. First off, what does NLRK stand for?
Jody Roya-Goodwin for the record. Actually, it doesn't stand for anything. It's her initials technically, but it is the official name of the company.
Okay. I was reading through everything and I couldn't find a connection.
I asked the same question.
I was curious what, what that stood for. I guess my questions are more, okay, so this being CDBG funds, obviously those funds would have to diminish some funding somewhere else. Where are these coming from?
These funds were actually allocated in 2010, 2011, 2009, 2010, 2011, and have not been expended due to the lack of staff and staff time in this kind of, in the economic development field to actually make loans or work with an entity to get them. And the entity that was here before, Nevada Micro Enterprise, actually founded and Valley Economic Development Center took over that organization. So we just now have an opportunity to actually commit those funds.
Okay. And, and the connection with EDON? EDON did not have an accelerator part in its organizational structure previously?
EDON does not have, EDON is a third party to the accelerator program. So there are accelerators in the community, the collaborative being one of, one of them. And so they're supporting the efforts of the accelerators, and they are the ones that brought it to our attention that it was a potential and a need. Through the discussion after your strategic plan with the priority committees, we had a discussion about what the city could do to support that, which is when we started talking about CDBG as eligible for economic development programs. And it kind of progressed, it just progressed to this point. So they knew Nicola who runs NLRK, and they knew the need, and so they connected us with her.
Okay. Okay, so I, so I get that. And I, I do very much support the smarter cities and their recommendations of tunneling, you know, economic development efforts through EDON. And so I'm trying to tie it back together. I guess my question is, for the funding of this position in essence, is the dollars for this effort being asked of other EDON supporters? Or is the ask being made fully of the city of Reno?
You would ask, actually have to ask Doug that specifically. Ours is just specifically a CDBG contract, though.
Okay, so that's...
I can answer that. Actually, EDON doesn't have any responsibility with these funds, is unrelated to any of the EDON funds. And these funds actually all go into the companies. So we really set the thought leadership for this. We recognized the need that we, there was a gap in the community for an accelerator program, understood that the CDBG funds may be able to be repurposed, and connected up the city with NLRK, which is actually Nicola Kerslake, who's also the Executive Director of the Battleborn Venture Fund. So we felt that Nicola overseeing the CDBG funds to help provide the funding to the companies would be a great match. EDON is not getting any of the money. EDON's only role in this is to support and providing leadership. So we do have other programs. We just were awarded a grant to help us provide the mentorship component to an accelerator. So we will be providing other components, but none of this, all of this funding, or the vast majority of this funding will be going to the companies, and a little bit for the management, which would all go to NLRK, none of it to EDON. Does that...
That, that, that does help. That's my only questions.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Burke?
I have a few questions. I'll start with you. You talked about accelerators and familiarity you have with accelerators in other communities. Do you know if any accelerators that you're familiar with are using these highly restricted community development block grant funds?
You know, I'm not totally familiar with that. I know that there are a lot of accelerators. I mean, you go to the Global Accelerator Network, and there's probably a couple, you know, at least 100 around the country, and they're all have different funding sources. Some, like the ASU Venture Catalyst came out of, there was some grant money, some of them are driven by, in private investors. So it really depends. There are some public-private partnerships. I, you know, specifically, I don't know, but I didn't look either. Again, I think it's, it's, I think it's a good use of that funding because it helps spur an area that we didn't have other resources for, but I don't know specifically.
Let me ask Steph, if, if you don't mind. Steph, do you know if, you've looked at accelerator models around the country, and have you seen CDBG funds used for this purpose? Because you mentioned in your introduction quite a bit about underwriting standards. And I know that the underwriting standards for community development block grant loans are very stringent. And I'm just wondering, you know, is this a good fit for this business model? And also, the people who came up and spoke in support of this, who have gone out and sought capital for their own businesses, have you had discussions with them about what's involved in underwriting a CDBG loan?
I have not. And I, we did not look into do other communities use it. We looked at, is it an eligible activity of CDBG and how do we implement that? So for CDBG, economic development is a specifically identified eligible use. The requirement is that you either assist a micro enterprise that is owned and one of the workers, with no more than five workers, being an LMI person, or the job, or it will create jobs for LMI people.
Okay.
And that is what we're doing. I mean, that is part of the underwriting standards, that's the CDBG part. So we, when I talk about the underwriting standards, I'm actually talking about beyond the CDBG part, that is not an expertise we have in-house. We're talking about the, is the business financially viable? Is, is this an okay model? When you talk about the accelerators, you know, is it, is all of that part feasible? We can do the, did you create the jobs or will you create the jobs piece? So when you look at it from a different perspective, so before, we've had, if you talk about micro enterprise, when the motel that was over here on the corner that burnt?
Mitzvah.
Thank you. I was going to say that. That's not right. When the mitzvah burnt, we, that was actually one of the last multiple loans we made. We made a loan to, to a barber shop, to the owner of the barber shop. And he was a micro enterprise because he was low-income, he did not create jobs. So that would be a more standard loan. What we're looking at now is how do we diversify that from a service sector job to a more, help us build, the people who would use those services, types of entrepreneurs. And then in addition, so when we talk about the, the E6 contract, we're talking about changing it or continuing successful model when it's done right with the underwriting piece of it. So we funded the expansion of Silver Peak to the parking gallery. We gave them $200,000. It was underwritten, pretty similar to a bank loan. So we got repaid fairly quickly. They created a number of jobs exceeding the requirement of 35,000, of one job for every $35,000 invested. So, so we have both models, and what we're looking at with doing both of these is, is a complete package. Help diversify, help continue to do businesses that are successful and might be ready to expand.
And Jody, you talked about finding the eligible kinds of, of projects. That specifically would exclude administrative types of services, correct?
Yes.
So that would be anything from planning to the support staff type of...
Right. So when we talk about the dollars that are going to fund the staff person through VEDC and the contract with NLRK, that piece that's not directly for loans, it's for program, for project administration, taking in the applications, doing that underwriting for us, convening the loan committees, all of the things that take place to actually make the, the loan happen.
If I may, Madam Mayor. I, I think, you know, you touched on some of this previous loan experience we have with the other organization, which we've worked with for a number of years, and they fell apart or, you know, kind of went away. And at our last meeting, you brought forward the action report. And there was, right? And there were some job reports in there. And I saw some, some job identifiers that we were going to create, and I made a comment and you and I kind of went back and forth. You said, well, we haven't had as much success as we hoped, but we created one. And I understand this change in direction from services to this industry, which I'm not getting a clear answer whether or not, you know, there's awareness that they have to hire low, moderate-income individuals. But is there awareness? I mean, have you talked with the folks who are supporting this? I mean, do you, are you seeing a connection? Have you really followed up on the market, you know, if it's this sector, that they will accept and be able to work with the community development block grant restrictions?
Again, this is part of the technical assistance aspect of the, the loan. So the program development, staff will be working very closely with, with Nicola's group, NLRK, to actually establish those, including the loan agreements, including the policies and procedures, what is included in the application that they're required to submit. So yes, there is substantially an awareness. And I wouldn't expect that somebody who would, who may be going to come in to apply would understand that, but it is imperative that our partner, our contracted entity, understand that. And that is, I mean, from the first time I had the conversation with Doug, that was exactly it. I'm telling you, it doesn't come without strings. It comes with strings, and these are the strings. And so when we continue those conversations, those are in every conversation to be met upfront rather than behind them.
And I understand. I mean, I'm just trying to get to the point of understanding, I mean, I would certainly hope that people who are getting these contracts to provide this assistance understand the programs. But whether or not we've really done enough market research to understand that this is the best loan lending product out of the, out to this, this group of people. And also the broader consideration, which I brought up during budget and during our, what was it, our CAPER earlier? Yeah. Is where we have the opportunity, along Councilmember Jordan's comments, to look at what the full scope of our community development block grant opportunities are, you know, and I don't know if this program income, you mentioned eligibility for economic development. I know how much we've cut our commitment to social service providers out of our CDBG monies over the last three or four years, and that is of concern that I keep hearing in the community. And also, the, you know, you started your comments mentioning redevelopment, and I keep asking for a bigger discussion about what our redevelopment objectives are, and blight is one of the criteria for CDBG, you know, dedication of resources too, and that is a term, you know, that's linked with redevelopment. So I'm a little, I'm having a little hard time with the lending piece of this to this new organization that's coming out of Southern California, when we, I don't see a clear track record or a match. And, and I'll, I'll, I'll say that on that contract. On the other contract, it looks like we're pigging, piggybacking alongside of a, one that the state has. And so maybe, you know, we're in a way in a joiner. But sometimes, and this is one thing I, I'm starting to really realize in economic development approaches, is just because the state has one economic development tool, doesn't necessarily mean that's the best tool for us to join and use because we have different pots of money and different objectives. And I think I've seen that in some of the, some of the larger economic development projects, you know, subsidies that have gone through in the last couple of years. So the, did you look at this contractor that has the initial, NLRK, is it?
Yes.
Did you look at that con, do you know who that person is? What their track record is? What kind of funds they're working with at the state and how the state selected this person?
We, I have looked at her track record, and she actually has more than just State of Nevada experience. She's actually done fund management internationally and a lot of it out of the East Coast. So there is a lot of experience there. And some of it has been with other restricted funds. I would say that there, so to go back to some of your earlier comments, is the reason, yes, all of those things are eligible that you talked about, the public services, the blight reduction, all of those also have caps, which is why we've had cuts in the past with, say, the public services. I'm aware there's dissatisfaction with that, but the city has committed to funding the CAC, which takes all plus the C, the CDBG public service cap. So, so we don't have that opportunity to say, we can repurpose this money to that purpose because it's just not... repurpose this money to that purpose because it's just not eligible. We would be repaying money. The, the blight reduction with the redevelopment, we actually do have a portion of our funds that go to blight reduction through the bond payment out of 10 North Virginia. That was a blight reduction activity. And so we're capped at no more than 30% of our grant amount can go towards that purpose. And then we also fund the code enforcement officers. So we're really, we have about $100,000 that theoretically you could put towards blight reduction. And if something came up that needed to be done, we could look at that. The, the next thing I'd say about the planning part is in, later in fiscal year, in the current fiscal year, we will be starting the consolidated planning process. So right now, we're finishing our, we're in our fourth year of our last five-year plan. So in advance of the next, of two years from now, because it's a very long process, we will be looking at holistically, what is it as a community we need, what, doing the needs assessment, doing the, the value assessment of what does the council at this point want to fund, what types of activities. But when you get to this, we have done the due diligence in terms of who we're contracting with to make sure that they're sufficiently qualified to do that. VEDC, they do this model, like I said, in multiple states. They have a 0.2 loss. So even though they're required to maintain 10% in the loan loss reserves, they've actually only had a 0.2% loss in those, of actually having to use those loan loss reserves in over $30 million worth of investment. So we do feel that they're very qualified to do these things. NLRK, like I said, she has done this multiple places with multiple sources. And we are not mirroring the state's program. We are trying to complement the, the state's program and other programs that are out there, the small business. The same way we're doing these two different programs, it's the same thing. We don't expect our accelerator program to be the same as the Nevada state program. We expect it to be a stepping stone so that maybe they can access that fund later. It, it's, it's all complementary rather than duplicative.
And the terms for these are each one year?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, thank you. And I think you just answered some of those. But I mean, I think this is a great concept. And I think the fact that we've got some excitement in the community about it too is critical because I think that's going to help make it successful. My question is really, and I think you've kind of touched on a little bit of it, is how did we decide on these two companies? I mean, are they the only ones that do this? Or is there others that we considered? How did we get down to these two? And, and
It amazingly is a very small pool of people or groups that want to do that. Like I said, Valley Economic, they took over Nevada Micro Enterprise, which was the locally operating a few years ago. We don't have other entities that typically, that really make loans. So we, that's how we got to Valley Economic. And then the other was, there is nobody locally doing the accelerator model. So that was purely a growth conversation from an interaction with, with Doug for EDON and the priorities committees to a recommendation on his behalf.
Can I, can I add something? You know, normally, no one would take on this level of fund with, I mean, Nicola's background, she ran, you know, 100 million dollar funds on the East Coast as an investment banker. The, I think it's a huge opportunity for us because, because she's working with Battleborn, she's in the community, and that's where her primary sources. You know, if she wasn't doing Battleborn, we could not get her to do this. So it's kind of a unique opportunity.
Right.
Because of the skill set. I mean, you ultimately, you know, every idea, every startup idea gets, I get really excited about, but you need to have a critical eye from an investment standpoint. And because she sits on that board and has that experience, she's somewhat uniquely qualified to do that. And this is, although majorly impactful in terms of the dollars, it is very small dollars in the scope of things. And so, you know, it would be hard to get some person to just manage that one piece of that individually. So that, that's kind of the, why it's a real compliment.
Right.
And again, just to your point before, it is very different than the state program. This is sort of the first step to try and get people qualified to where they would be qualified for either Battleborn or a Sierra Angel investment or Reno Angel investment. So this is before that. They are not competitive at all. They just, they complement each other.
Let me this, Mr. Irwin. In terms of, this is the first step, and I understand it's not structured finance, it's first step. Is it typical that you have this first step money being so regulated and restricted?
Well, I think that, you know, most of the accelerator, I mean, my understanding of LMI requirements is that they meet that LMI requirement. And if, you know, if you listen to Mr. Elsie, you know, he's hiring a student out of TMCC. Or a lot of these people that are in these startup companies, they're not making, they're not, there's no, they're not making any money. They've stepped out. They will fit that requirement. And so when, you know, there are definitely restrictions, but the way that it has been structured and the, with the discussion with, with the city is, will, will both benefit the company and also work with inside of the CDBG guidelines. That is the, that is the, I mean, we've talked about that from day one and understand the requirements. So.
Mr. Dorch, did you have anything else?
No, I think, I think, from my standpoint, it's a very small investment that could yield great returns.
Absolutely.
From looking at it, so.
Mr. Delgado.
Quick questions. City of Sparks, Washington County, they participate in similar with their funds as well as we are?
At this point, they are not.
Okay. Kind of taking the lead on this?
Yes.
With folks who are, who are going to be able to apply for these loans, are they just residents of Reno? Are we looking at certain kind of frameworks to make, of where these are going to take place? Or, you know, just general questions on how we're going
No, I get it. So the, the requirements are, the business will have to be located in the city of Reno for our funds. If Sparks came in there and used CDBG, their requirement would be, they'd have to be in the city of Sparks. And then it is, for CDBG purposes, the two, the other, the second main requirement is, they're either a micro enterprise that's an LMI, headed by an LMI person, or they will be creating jobs for LMI people.
Okay. I know there's a lot of sensitivity beyond the CDBG and it being geographically within certain areas. Is this also going, I mean, for the most part, do we see this as a, I think it's great to, for job creation and entrepreneurship and getting some people going. I know there's accelerator programs in other parts, a lot of college towns, where they try and have this going for students coming out of the, you know, tech world and everything else, which is great. What I was wondering about is, these dollars being moved from certain geographical areas into other ones that may have an opportunity for, for development opportunities, say, in, on the, the Wells region and some of these other parts where there's, we have LMI business owners and other opportunities. But I know there's an expansion going on in the urban core as well. I mean, how's, how, have we thought about how that might work out?
We did. And not so much for the accelerator program, specifically because they're, they're startups and there's, there are other things at play that it, that might be the killer kind of thing. Though in the VEDC contract, we do have some, some priorities for how they would rank businesses. And so if that, if you had, if everybody told me today they wanted it to be, you know, they wanted to change those or they wanted to add one, we could do that.
Okay. I just think it's important for some of those other communities to start seeing vibrance within the zone, if those are some dollars that go to those, those communities. I think it's been touched on by Councilwoman Breckus and Councilwoman Jordan about, if possibly just the simplicity of having a pie of some sort to show those caps of dollars of the CDBG funds and how those have been spent or possibly spent. I think you might have had something last time around, but I don't recall.
I actually do have.
Do you have that?
A chart with five years of expenditures that I can give each of you because it's, it's not a pie chart. It doesn't go well that way for me.
Okay. I'd appreciate that.
Is there any other discussion or questions, Ms. Jordan?
I did. Are we, are we taking E5 and 6 together right now? Is that what we're doing? We're just, because it's, it seems like we're kind of talking.
I, I think so. I pulled them both simultaneously, and the discussion has been simultaneous. So yeah.
Okay.
Unless there's a concern or issue to separate them, I intended for them to be.
No. So my, my question is, we're, we're in essence talking about $475,000, correct? Okay. And that's where the pie comes into play. And that, that's, that's the, maybe the questions that I still have lingering is the confirmation that these dollars, CDBG dollars cannot or, cannot be used or pulled from some other source that we will have in the future coming towards us saying, I'm concerned about the pie. That's, that's my concern.
In terms of the CDBG pie?
Yes.
Okay.
And these specific $475,000.
So each year, so did it get passed? So you'll see over, so these are actually, like I said before, previous allocations under, what, on here in 10 and 11, sorry. In, in FY 10 and 10, 11, and FY 11, 12, there were funds allocated to the Grow Business Fund, Go Loud or Go Soft. And when we had a redevelopment agency to implement those, the majority of these funds did not get expended. We did have the one loan that created the one job, but, or in this past year, and closed out. So their holdover funds, so this year they're not taking from anywhere else. You will, so these grants, they're not actually a full year. They're between, they're October to June. They, because that's the fiscal year we operate on and the program cycle we operate on. So those funds, if you chose to reallocate those, that would come before you in May for the action plan. And if you didn't want to fund those again, then you would say, we don't want to fund those again.
But at this point, for, for this, until June of next year.
Yes.
Those dollars that are the carryover dollars cannot be, or cannot be used for, we have before us today, a Community Assistance Center request for overflow, that you can't shift.
Correct. You could move the dollars into another activity. You couldn't move them into public service or administration.
Okay.
Because of the caps on those, those portions of the pie. So if you look at the pie as a whole, 20% of the pie can go to a planning and administration. 20% of the, well, in our case, 26% of the pie can go to public services. And then up to, and it's not, this one's not exclusive, 30% of the whole pie, which would overlap that public service dollars, can go to blight reduction. The rest of it has to go to economic development, infrastructure, public facilities, kinds of hard or more hard activities. So you could, I think we had this conversation once with, related to the CAC, is we could go out and use, say, a portion of this money to buy a building that would provide, be used to provide overflow, but we can't use it to pay a lease on a building to provide overflow.
Okay. So I guess my question is, what's the average timeline that it takes from initial discussions about a, a incubator, one of these companies coming forward and saying they, they would like this assistance to completion?
I'm going to have to look at the experts for that.
Do you want to talk about the accelerator or you want to talk about the loan? Because they are two different, two totally different things. The E5 or E6? Because I'm more on the accelerator side, and I think Lou's.
Well, well, both. I, I'm trying to figure out because in essence, if this should get approved, we're, we're literally only approving until June of next year. So I'm trying to figure out within that, I'm trying to prepare us for June of next year and us having this exact discussion again because maybe a company didn't get through the process. And then we are in a situation of dividing up the pie. I'm trying to figure out where the timeline is.
Okay. So there is a provision in there that they can prevent, finish any of the loans that are currently in the process. And it can be extended for those funds without allocating new funds if you wanted to. So we could amend it to, to say that you had, you spent 150 of the $200,000, or in this case, say, neither one of them translate really well. So you spent $100,000 of the 175 going towards accelerator businesses. You could, council could say, we want to amend it, and the 75,000 stays available until December, which gets them through the next half a year, rather than allocating them new money at that point in time. Or you could do both.
Madam Mayor, if I may, you know, this economic development money is interchangeable with infrastructure money, correct?
Yes.
And I see we dropped PED ramps from CDBG this year. And we put it in the general fund, is my recollection.
I do not know if they put it in the general fund. I would have to look at Public Works for that.
Yeah.
We did not drop PED ramps for the sake of dropping PED ramps. We moved the money from PED ramps to the Reno Sports Act complex accessibility modifications.
Okay, okay. So it could go towards park facilities that are large community facilities.
It cannot go towards maintenance of them.
Oh, I understand. But I mean, you know, think about it. If we've got some money that we've put into CDBG eligible programs in the past, and we've got those in the general fund, you could have backed that money out and done unrestricted money on this for economic development purposes, right? I mean, if.
Could you have, so we could have swapped out general funds.
Yeah.
And for other eligible projects.
Yeah, because I thought.
We could have, but I'm not aware of any.
I thought we put.
That we could actually do substantial resources.
I thought we put PED ramps into the general fund. Well, I guess, you know, I, I'm okay supporting this for the one year, even though at the last meeting, when I reviewed our lending efforts in the past, I felt they were not producing. And this is federal money. I think we need to be really thoughtful about federal money because issues, you know, with, you know, that, that's not money that we create. It's, it's everyone's money. But anyway, it is a very popular, great program. But I'll, I just want, and I know there'll be a lot of tracking. And so come June, and maybe no loans, two loans have been made or two or three are in the works, we'll get that reporting information and, and we'll be able to evaluate, right?
Yes.
I mean.
Yes, you will be frightened.
Okay.
So when, if new contracts come before you, you will, part of the staff report would be that we've done, we did this amount of money last year, and this is the amount of loans that were made on, in an average of the loan amount.
What's the success for each of these contracts? Is anything less than getting all this money out to very, and I know the understanding, writing standards are very tight, but anything less than getting all this money out is, is that a failure on, on what you think here?
In, actually, I, I wouldn't judge it on getting the money out. I would judge it on, are they making the appropriate assistance available to the appropriate entities? So in each contract, it actually says a number of entities that they, of businesses that will be assisted. And that is actually the bigger thing to me, that they're assisting qualified businesses that will go, not that they would just push the money out, give, give the money away, so to speak, as opposed to holding all the accountability part.
Well, it's all loan, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
The, again, for the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, I think the important thing to remember here are two things. One of them is, this is a direction that was given some time back in terms of using this money for economic development. As Jody pointed out, we did not, we were not successful in finding a way to push that money out. So this is using it for the same purpose. The council originally said they wanted the use for, it's just for a different approach. Now, going forward, obviously, that's a, that's a decision that you'll have to make collectively in terms of how you want to use it. The other thing is that the standard of just pushing it out, I would say, you know, we haven't necessarily succeeded in that, but we do have some experience where we did push it out and it didn't go anywhere. And I think that's what Jody's saying is, rather than say, do we get the money out, we would like to say, and have the council agree, that it should be pushed out with success. And success would be defined as creating jobs that would carry on in the future, hopefully creating more economic activity that generates more revenue to allow more of it to happen. So in the past, in some cases, yeah, we pushed it out, but it just, that was it. It's gone. You know, it was here and it's gone, but there was nothing really to show for it. If the business fails, then we've succeeded in pushing the money out, but we haven't really enhanced the community. So that, that's kind of the explanation, I think, of terms of why we're where we're at today and what we were thinking as staff in terms of what the overall goal was. And ultimately, it's your decision, but the goal was to try to make this money, you know, regenerate and grow and, and really be a long-term prospor in terms of just maybe giving somebody a job for one year.
Lou, did you have something to add to that?
Thank you. For the record, I just wanted to let you know on the reporting process, if you were uncertain, we do a pipeline. It's a constant any day. You can look at it. We could certainly provide that to Jody on an ongoing basis so that you have it at your meetings. It shows every single line, loan that is being worked on, whether it's being processed, underwritten, funded. And you could have access to that all times. Our goal right now is to get loans from the time they're completed, when they come in, have them processed and funded within 60 days. And we do have that available to make ongoing reports for all your meetings so that you could see that we're on task.
Thank you.
Mr. Delgado?
What? Pardon?
I, I just said, thank you. And Mr. Delgado has been waiting quite a while for his.
Just a simple question. This is exciting for the community in general, but how's this, how is this information, this marketing going to get out to folks to know that they can come and have this opportunity?
We work very closely because we work with typically non-bankable LMI population. We work very closely with all the banks here in Reno. I've been up here on numerous occasions working with them. We get, I'm in Las Vegas. I get probably seven to 10 phone calls just from Bank of Amer- just from Bank of America here, weekly, with loan referrals. And with this type of loan product, the people need the face-to-face. We try to do it over, we email, that type of thing. It just needs the eye contact, the personal contact, for after the loan, the servicing. And so this will be much more successful to have a person here. From here, we actually have three strong candidates waiting. And they want to do, if it's approved, final interviews on Friday. They're all locals. In fact, one is born and raised here in Reno, and she's done some amazing economic development already. So, but we do have the process. And Roberta Barrigan, the president, he has been doing CDBG loans for about 15 years. So he does understand how strict and what the outcomes. And we actually have the documents to document job creation with LMI as we go along. It's all part of the loan product.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion on item E5 and E6 to approve the contract between the City of Reno and NLRK for Economic Development Services. Can we approve both?
And Valley Economic?
And Valley Economic. Can we approve both of them together?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to ask the motioner if she would be willing to provide direction to staff to report to us what we would deem success on these two contracts by the closeout of the term of the contract. And separating the technical assistance, because I understand there's a technical assistance component to this, and that will, it's essentially, that's administrative for those two, these two contractors. So, so on the, on both sides, both the loans and the other sides, to help us evaluate if this is the best model for us and our, some of our economic development objectives, so.
Just for clarification, what, you just, you want our opinion of that? Or do you want to have a discussion?
How will we be able to evaluate at the term of this, whether or not this is something that is succeeding, and we would want it to continue next year? Because it is a short-term commitment of our funds.
Mr. Manager, that's something that you would just automatically do, correct?
That's correct. Staff can, we can obviously look at it. If council wants us to bring something back to them to, to approve, I guess I'm, I need clarification on that as well.
Well, I see what's in the action report. And last time in the action report, we kind of, you know, acknowledged that it wasn't working. So, you know, what we've done in the past in terms of the job creation. So I'd like to know, going into this, what we can expect as, how we would evaluate if this is a success or not, long-term?
I guess, from staff's perspective, we would create, assist the number of businesses that are identified in the contract. And then that they would be creating the appropriate number of jobs and/or within a year of the, of the assistance. Or they would be qualified as an LMI microenterprise.
Okay. I mean, it may all be there in your reporting requirements.
Yeah, and I think my concern isn't so much that we set the, the bar, let's say, because I know, I understand it's gonna be a small window of, of time, but more just a reporting back with regards to, during that timeline, what has happened. And I guess my, my only clarification is that, the clear understanding that this is just through, you know, June. And this absolutely is no guarantee of anything in, with regards to the future. I see this, Jenny, I think is kind of the same reporting that we asked of baseball. And we would ask for something similar, you know, of the funds that are being expended to be, certainly get a report back on, you know, what, what's hap-
Do, just for clarity, do you want that before the CAPER? I mean, because that's when you would get, you would automat, each year you will get a CAPER report on how we've met, what we've done with the CDBG money.
Well, I think upon execution of these contracts, because it helps us understand, you know, before the CA, if it's set when the CAPER comes in, you're already midstream, and then you can see how you're doing. But I'd like to know at the onset, what we're trying to succeed out of this.
So if the, if new contracts come back to you in May or June for the new fiscal year, you would like, just have that information included in that report? Or would you like a separate report?
Before you bring contracts back, tell us what, what a success on these contracts is with these, you know, what the thresholds, the milestones are that we're looking for, before you bring back contract amendments?
Okay.
I, I, I'm concerned about autopiloting this. I feel like this is money that was around 10, 11 with other groups, and, oh, we came up. And, and I'm concerned about autopiloting something that we're not really evaluating and even setting out for ourselves what we want to succeed.
Okay.
And is that amenable to you, Madam?
The staff has heard the, the, the direction. Manager, is that clear enough for you? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for being here to share your information. And big kudos. I mean, it is big acclaim that we have such superheroes and graduates from the Tech Star Program. Thank you. We wish you good luck. Good to be partners with you. E4, Ms. Jordan?
Jody, your backup.
My blue hat.
My question, and, and some of my questions, including the prior items and this one as well, is because I'm new. And I don't have the institutional knowledge that some may have here. So can you tell me, where is the overflow?
The overflow is, will be located on Timber Way this year.
Okay, I'm-
You're drawing a blank.
Yeah, I'm drawing a blank, I'm sorry.
It's north, it's between Valley and Sutro, north of Sixth, kind of up farther. It's, there's only, it's a couple blocks long. It's most, it's a couple of, well, it's four or five older warehouses.
For the record, Assistant City Manager, Bill Thomas. It is to the east of where Minogue used to be, if you think of that neighborhood. Do you remember where Minogue was next to the university?
Yes.
It's further to the east. So between there and Sutro, that general neighborhood up there, south of McCarran.
Has this been a overflow in the past?
It has not. The buildings we used as overflow in the past were flood management authority, and they've all been demolished or reoccupied as their own office buildings.
How does the transportation work?
Volunteers of America has a bus, a small bus, like a, like a casino would have, that they shuttle them with.
What, what is trending with regards to our overall homeless population compared, and maybe I'm asking you questions that you need to do some homework on, but I've been seeing some, some numbers that suggest, due to the improving economy, that on a nationwide basis, the homeless population has reduced in the last year or so by about 17%. And I want to see if that's translating to us.
I cannot give you good numbers locally. I can, I mean, I can give you some trend information. There are, there has been a reduction in the past few years in homelessness, locally, statewide, nationally. A lot of that comes from an influx of federal resources through the stimulus packages, where that was a priority, or, not a priority, where those resources were made available. So we had what was called homeless prevention rapid rehousing. Statewide, it added millions of dollars specifically to house and keep housed people who were experiencing a risk of homelessness. Locally, we assisted more than 300 households. The, then, after that, then, our Emergency Solutions Grant, they added funding specifically for rehousing. This year, all of that money, essentially all of that money went away. And the HPRP grant expired the year before last. So you are, what happens after that, that assistance has expired, and with the federal cuts, is to be known at this point. There's actually conflicting national data about, depending upon when this study was done, yes, there were reductions. Other communities are seeing increases. We won't have a feel for that, a really good feel for that, until the point in time count is done in January, which it's done every year in January.
What kind of resources will be provided at the overflow?
At overflow, it's simply a place to sleep. I mean, they can access the shelter for the main campus for other things, but they are, they eat dinner at campus, and then they are bussed. They go to sleep, they get up, and they come back.
And where do they come back to?
They come back to the campus.
And what, but they're-
Some of them do work, some of them are looking for jobs, some of them are the ones we've discussed before.
So, but the, the, the nature of overflow is that there's not space enough in the Community Assistance Center for the overflow? So they're needing to-
In the shelter.
In the shelter?
And, yes.
Okay, so when they, when they return to the Community Assistance Center site, what is your program? What is the, and maybe I'm getting into operations here. What is the process that the individuals go through on a daily basis? If, if, if there's not room in the facility for them, where are they during the day?
The people, there are not people sleeping in the shelter during the day, unless, even the current shelter during the day, unless they work nights. They can be in the shelter doing other things. Some people volunteer to clean, some people hang out in the day area, some people hang out in the multipurpose room and can watch TV or whatever. Many people are out looking for work, or like I said, going to work, that kind of thing. There, there is no additional programming provided during the day for these clients versus what is provided during the day for clients accessing the shelter. What we're merely doing is opening beds so that they are out of the elements during the freezing times of year.
And they would be required to, during the day hours, they could not be at the overflow shelter? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Any, Ms. Breckus?
And thank you for your presentation. I, I do feel that you are an encyclopedia of federal programs, and that's why you get asked the hard questions, and you do a very good job in your responses. And I too am new. But I did not know that we were shifting locations to Timber Way. I'm curious, who owns that building? And those are a bunch of old warehouses. And who's paying for all the improvements going on into this building for occupancy?
There are no improvements going on, so nobody is paying for those. It is a private property owner that I do not have the name of. We are not the leasee on the site. Volunteers of America is working directly with the facility owner.
But it has the proper, proper occupancy for group gathering and all that?
It may be helpful for us to go ahead and take public comment, because we do have Rochelle here who does want to speak, and it could answer some of the questions. Rochelle, why don't we go ahead and move right to you? Because it could answer some of your questions.
Hi, Rochelle Pelisser, Vice President of Volunteers of America. We've found that doing overflow saves lives in our community. They, we've done it for years. We've done it in different buildings for years. Luckily, we've had Washoe County warehouse buildings to do it in the past. This year, we do not have availability to those buildings. A couple of them have been torn down. One, the one from last year, the Flood Plane Management District is moving their staff back into, so we can't use that building. Will be serving up to 100 single males and females at the location. We, I was able to get a bus donated last year, so we transport back and forth. They come on site, they do an intake every day, so we know exactly who's there. All of that information is entered into the Homeless Management Information System that we have statewide. We, they get fed there, and then we bus them over. They bed down as soon as they get there. They wake up in the morning, and by 6:00, we're bussing them back to receive services on site. They'll, they'll be doing the same thing that everyone else, who actually sleeps there, does. They just, they, they don't usually sleep there.
It says on page three of the agreement, the paragraph before compensation, it says, "Overflow will not house families with minor children, and clients will be not included in outcome reporting." And then on the, the next, it says, under compensation, "The balance is to be covered by a private grant secured by the operator for family shelter operating expenses." It seemed a little confusing that you, in one terms, you're saying no families, and then here you're saying you're getting a grant for families. I mean, it-
They probably mean, you know, the contract isn't just for the family shelter. The contract is for all of the shelters, so. And part of that contract is that we have to raise up to 10% of the funds to do these programs.
And that $35,000 is gonna go to the overflow?
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Jody Royo, good one for the record. So this is an amendment, and the underlined language is the added language specific to overflow.
Oh.
So in their con, in their standard, in the contract you approved in June, they are required to provide a certain amount of the funding for shelter operations, and they have a grant to do that. So it's called out so that it's clear we're not reimbursing them for the total amount of the operations. In this case, it's up above, it says, "Not families." We are not doing background checks. We are not providing appropriate facilities for children, minor children. So we were just spelling out that we'll provide it for single adults, male and female, if they could be accommodated, because that was the other thing. We didn't have a space potentially identified at that point. So if they couldn't accom, but they can accommodate single, single adults, but we cannot accommodate minor children in this environment.
Okay. And then, there's also an insurance component that you don't mention in your staff report, but it seems to be greatly altered. What is the driver for that insurance changes?
Oh, it's not. The insurance is not greatly altered. It's, again, just the underlined section. And it's, under the commercial liability is where you find all of the amendments, and it increases the amount. And that has to do with them taking on the onsite monitoring, not the overflow component of it. And that was what risk management required.
Our, our risk management? Because I saw it going over to $3 million on the commercial general liability insurance in Attachment A?
Yes.
From 1 to 3 million? That's kind of a jump. I mean, so our risk management felt that we needed?
Yes.
Was there any particular reasons why?
Again, because we're changing from contracted security with Securitas to onsite monitoring to streamline the programs. So they're taking on that additional service at the campus.
Oh, okay, that clears.
Any other questions?
What's the, what's the hours of the night operation, the overflow?
They'll start checking in at about 7:00 at night. We'll start transporting at 8:45, so they'll get there at about 9:00. Then we'll start transporting back at 6:00 in the morning. So.
Since this is a, a new overflow location, what kind of neighborhood notification went out on this?
RPD in my organization has already been meeting with the neighbors, talking to them extensively. It's up there on Timber, in where the warehouses are. So we already have Reno Sparks Gospel Mission serving the same clientele up there, doing the same sorts of things up there. So it's, it's not much different use than what's going on. Luckily, to the back, there are no neighbors. It's a, it's like cut into a hill. There's a cliff, so there's no neighbors to the back. There's just industrial to both sides. Across the street, there is residential, but it backs up onto Timber. So all you see is their trees and their fences. There will be no movement of the clients once they're there in the neighborhood at all.
It's, it's within the structure.
Yes, yes.
And, and just to clarify for staff, all the regular building and permitting requirements, you know, that any youth would have to go through, they've gone through these, and that's in place. Okay.
This building, I feel like, has more amenities, so to speak, than some of the buildings in the past that we've had, so.
Thanks, Rochelle. Any other questions? Ms. Jordan, a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Motion and a second, all in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. E11, Ms. Breckus?
Staff, I think that was park staff, whoa, public works staff. You know, I just, I see on the previous item that I didn't pull, we're paying Nevada Energy quite a bit of money to help facilitate our infrastructure program, but then here, when we're giving a easement to Nevada Energy, or excuse me, it's Sierra Pacific maybe, or, you know, who's it? Yeah, Sierra Pacific. It doesn't look like we're getting any money from them for the privilege of having an easement over our property, and I'm just trying to, is that, is that true?
Lori Miles, Public Works. The easement is actually going to serve the, the cell tower that we've approved in a previous lease in April of 2012. So it's serving the purpose that we told them AT&amp;T that they could run power to the, the cell tower itself. So we're meeting obligations within the lease.
We are, okay, because I saw that the cell tower is $1,500 a month, that we're getting revenue. But just wanted to make sure that there wasn't an opportunity we're missing to get additional revenue on granting an easement and encumbering our property. But you're saying that this is one of our obligations under that previous agreements?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? A motion? Motion for approval and second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll move into our public hearings. Item F1, Madam Secretary?
For the record, proper notice was given, and we received one email in opposition from Nancy Church.
This is the Mayberry-Hunterlake zone change.
This was council-initiated.
Okay.
Don't know if we need a staff report. I was the one who requested it to be initiated, and I think I-
Anyone have questions?
Have no questions.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, I need to read the ordinance.
Yeah, indeed you do.
This is Bill Number 6873, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning rezoning a 1.7, excuse me, a 1.17 acre parcel located on the south side of Mayberry Drive, 200 feet west of Hunter Lake Drive, from MF14 multifamily 14 units per acre to PF Public Facility, and a 1.25 acre parcel located on the west side of Hunter Lake Drive, 330 feet south of Mayberry Drive, from SF15 single-family residential 1,500 square feet to PF Public Facility, together with other matters property relating thereto.
We have a motion and a second for a referral, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. F2.
This is Bill Number-
Madam Secretary?
For the record, proper notice was given, and we received no correspondence.
And this is, this is Bill Number 6874, and ordinance annexing to and making part of the city of Reno certain specifically described territory being 9.39 acres of property located north of the intersection of Gold Ranch Road and Mahogany Canyon Court, Washoe Canyon Batters, together with other matters property relating thereto.
Move to refer.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Well, I have a question on this, Madam Mayor. If I may. As this is an annexation at the very extent of our corporate boundaries, maybe even our state boundaries, do you have a map that shows us what our edge of the city looks like as we push up to the California line? I'm just, I couldn't tell from the map.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, this, this map illustrates the, the westernmost property line is actually the California-Nevada border. There's a 100-foot part, a 100-foot wide parcel to the north that separates it from our contiguous city limits. Essentially functions as an easement, it's a road that accesses properties in California. However, it is a separate parcel, so we're not able to do the traditional annexation process, the NRS 670. Because this, this area is identified as a Tier 1 area in our program of annexation, we're able to do a non-contiguous annexation, subject to approval of the Regional Annexation Commission, who, who did approve this application.
Okay, so that little easement that gets you over into California, is that the parcel right there, or is it part of another parcel that, that one? Yeah, does that, is that part of that parcel over in California too?
No, it's, it's a Nevada-
Who, who owns that parcel?
I, I don't know offhand.
Okay, okay, so the CC above is our, is us-
Corporate limit.
Okay, and down, and, and, but to the, to the west there, that straight, you know, old section line, that's all California?
That's correct.
Okay, and then what's down below to the south? Those are California?
No, to, to the south, still, it's still Washoe County. They're currently in our sphere of influence.
Okay.
That, those parcels were part of a previous council direction. We're working with regional planning to remove those from our sphere of influence.
Oh, okay.
So if that does move forward, council initiated the work, this, this parcel that's subject to, to your review for annexation would be, would be the end of our sphere of influence and our city limit.
Why didn't we pull this one then? Because we're separated by this other road parcel and have a cleaner edge there.
Well, there, there is also an entitlement that was approved by the Planning Commission for many storage, so there's an active entitlement that the city of Reno processed on that, on that parcel.
Okay, okay. So essentially, this property and the others going north that are already in, that's the extent of our western boundaries?
That would be the extent of our western boundaries.
How far does that line there go up along the California border? I mean, it's got at some point not go into Verde, right? And then, I mean-
Trying to visualize offhand. It go, it go, it definitely goes all the way up to the Gold Ranch Casino.
Oh, okay, and then, okay, okay. And then in between these, this little strip in between what's called US 4, that is, that's, what, is that the highway there?
That, that's Highway 40, uh-huh.
That's old Highway 40?
Correct.
Okay, and all those are in our sphere?
Yes, this, this, this entire area is currently in our sphere.
Okay, I'm just, I'm really trying to get a handle of what the boundaries are envisioned on, in this area, maybe because we've made that decision to pull it out. But you guys have a clear idea?
We do.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
The only other comment to make is the fantastic name of this, the Flying Goat Storage. Yeah, kudos to the name of this.
I don't want to know what they were doing the night before. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. F3. We do have public comment. Gilbert Sanchez?
And for the record, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
Hello, I'm Gilbert Sanchez, I'm from Yescow. We're the signed contractor for the Jackson, Jackson's North Town Chevron. And our customer has made a decision to rebrand his station and become a Chevron retailer. And the Chevron brand is recognized for its promise to consumers of quality, to be clean and inviting and convenient. So their commitment to the consumers to be their first choice for gasoline presents a need for a visual identity that is part of their brand awareness. So as a Chevron retailer, the customer is required to adhere to a set of minimum image requirements. And these image requirements are different, dependent on the amount of fuel that's dispensed at the location. So we refer to what's called the HM 2020 Image Program to identify and present signs that meet the requirements of Chevron to be a dealer. And part of these requirements is visibility of the site, and the primary ID sign from the roadway is to be non-obstructed. So the pole sign is a preferred type of ID sign, which you can see here. It is required to remain in scale to the surroundings. The, there are three sizes of pole signs used in the Chevron program, the C45, the C60, and the C78. And based on the setback from the street, it was determined that for visibility purposes, the C60 would be, would be used. And their program is built around a modular concept with the standard components stacked. They, they are the hallmark at the top, the with tech run, which is a requirement, a lighted gas price sign, and then the APC sign, which might identify car wash or food mart of that, or that type of use. So the, the branding program is designed to be reflective of a premium brand retail outlet equal to or better than Chevron's major competitors, and used as a guide, to effectively guide people to the location. So in developing a program, we had the condition number eight of the special use permit, where the customer had to submit a sign package, where his wall signs could not exceed 200 square feet, and one monument sign not to exceed 32 square feet. So that was what we were faced with initially. The site is located, the site is located at the corner of McCarran and North Town Lane. And it has the Ore Creek running around, along the north from east to west, the north portion of the parcel. On the same parcel is the main, primary pylon sign for the shopping center, which you see in this area.
Mr. Sanchez, you're going to need to kind of wrap it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
The, the zoning for this area is zoned for AC, and in other parts of the city, Chevron's competitors zoned in AC would be allowed, this sign would be allowed in an AC use. It could be 35 feet high, based on the speed limit. The, the square footage allotment would be much greater than the 32 square feet. And so we're trying to balance Chevron's requirements to the customer and, and the city's requirements, and try to have some form of equality for this customer zoned the same as some of his competitors in the area that don't have the special use permit applied to their sign program.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other public comment forms? Do we need staff? Do you want staff or ready for a motion?
I would like staff.
Okay.
Lauren Brera, Planning Intern.
Okay. So, in 1999, when this special use permit was requested and granted, who was the applicant?
The original applicant was Equilon Enterprises LLC.
And was it for this parcel, or was it for the entire shopping center?
So there's one in 1992 for the entire parcel, or for the entire shopping center, and that's a 29-acre development. And then there was one in 1999 specifically for this parcel.
Okay, so there was a sign package when the shopping center developer developed this as one development? And then in 99, the property owner, the parcel had been subdivided by then? But it still functions really as one shopping center, more or less? Okay, well, and staff, you recommended it okay on this?
I did, because if it is, if it was done under standard code now, it would be allowed. The shopping center originally, and the convenience center actually, originally was required a special use permit because it was adjacent to residential property, and it was located along a major arterial. The property is no longer adjacent to residential zone property, and it, we also don't have the requirement anymore for a special use permit to develop along a major arterial.
Okay, but, you know, this kind of gets into this parcel mapping, special use permit issue that keeps coming up, and I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, if we develop something as a shopping center, and it's going to function as one as the whole, and we give a special use permit for that package, which is the identity, and how we more or less allocate, you know, the design, and one of those components is the signs, then over time, someone could just come and parcel and parcel and, and claim more signage, more signage, more signage. And I'm concerned that that's what's going on here. And I, I understand that, you know, maybe he has, you know, can point to other AC, you know, competitors who have that. But I think we could also point to lots of shopping centers that also developed under one special use permit where a sign package, and that was the identity. So I think that the support of this is maybe one that could lead to greater sign proliferation and inconsistency with our original review of these developments, because that's when we give the most clear review of these, is when they're, you know, they came in for the first special use permit. Do you, do you follow?
I do, yes.
Okay, so, and his argument that, well, you know, we're going from Jackson to Chevron, and we, this is their standard. I, I don't find that compelling either, because the, the, I would say that someone's corporate relationship shouldn't really drive our regulations, and, and especially if, you know, maybe this sign will lead to other signs from, you, you see what I'm saying? Do you have any other sign requests pending for this sort of thing? Do you see any?
Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager. We've had numerous property owners or business owners come in over the last few years, when MU came in, and different standards were applied, and there were old sign packages. Some, we could apply new code, just depending on if there was a special use permit, if there was a condition for a sign package. Some we've been able to do. We've amended, at least one that I can think of, a planning commission that was down in South Virginia. It never came to city council, so it was amended through planning commission. So it is fairly common for new business owners to come in and amend the sign package.
And you didn't really quote any master plan policies related to signage to help us make this determination? You know, one of our findings is, be as in conformance with the master plan. Does the master plan have any signage guidance or related to-
Very little.
-proliferation of signs?
Specifically to that, no.
Okay, okay. Well, you know, for the integrity of our previous development, which is when we look at these the most, and this was related to residential adjacency, and then, you know, basically the fact that someone parcel maps it gives, you know, less, less integrity to the original special use per, special use permit process, which was back in 99. And I don't think our sign standards have changed much since then.
Very little.
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion that we deny that-
This is Mr. Delgado's word, so we will turn this over. Mr. Delgado?
I think Councilwoman asked really great questions, I appreciate that. So, really quick, is the existing sign coming down, or is that just, is this, because it looks like there's several different businesses on that sign, according to this picture.
The shopping center tenant sign is not coming down. The existing monument sign for the fuel, the fuel price sign is coming down, and it's going to be, they're looking to propose it to be replaced with this sign here.
Okay. Councilwoman Breckus, she answered, asked a bunch of the questions that you answered, thank you very much. I, I don't see any problem with adding this sign for their, for their business. So I have moved to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And the motion carries four, five to one. Item F4 has a time certain of 3 o'clock, we will return to that. So we'll move on to resolutions, Resolution H1.
Resolution Number 7903, Resolution Accepting Streets and Parcel, Canyon Pines Phase 3, Portions of Peavine Creek Road, Peavine Valley Road, Peavine Pines Court, Plum Tree Court, Antelope Trail Court, Peavine Peak Court, and Parcel A.
Move to adopt.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. H2.
Resolution Number 7904, Resolution Accepting Streets, Streets, Villages at Demony Ranch, Unit 19B3, Portions of Hazelcrest Drive and Ridge Brook Drive.
Motion to adopt.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. H3.
Resolution 7905, Resolution Accepting Streets, Villages at Demony Ranch, Unit 19B4, A Portion of Ridge Brook Drive.
Motion to adopt.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. H4.
Resolution 7906, Resolution Accepting Streets, Villages at Demony Ranch, Unit 19B5, Portions, Portions of Huntsdale Drive, Walnut Ridge Drive, Pebble Hill Drive, White Cliff Drive, and Ridge Brook Drive.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. H5.
Resolution Number 7907, Resolution To Amend The Fiscal Year 2013-14 Municipal Court And Finance Section Of The Fee Resolution, As It Relates To NRS Determined Fees And Cost Recovery For Duplicate Lean-Release Sewer Fees And Allowing For Necessary Administration, Administrative Changes Throughout The Fee Schedule In Its Entirety.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item I1, is there a lot of discussion on this? Is there a lot of discussion on this one? Do we need more than 25 minutes on this one? Doesn't sound like it, so we'll just go ahead and move right into it?
I did too.
Staff report, and then we'll take public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, Mr. Senate Manager Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the Business License Division. You have before you five items. These items, first off, are item I1.1. This is an acceptance of the business impact statement for amendments to Reno Municipal Code Title IV, V, and VIII. Staff is asking council to find that the business impact statement was prepared in compliance with NRS 237.080 and 090, and the ordinance changes do not impose a direct or significant economic burden, nor directly restrict the formation of expansion of a business. The next item is item I1.2. This is an ordinance amendment to Title IV of the Business License Code by adding a new section, 4.04, .025, entitled Business License Required for Gross Revenue from Expressive Speech or Conduct in Public Forums. What we've done with this item is we moved it from privileged license Title V to Title IV and simplified the application process. This new process would only require copy of the applicant's identification, contact information, and payment of the required fees. Then, we would issue the license over the counter. Item I1.3 is revocation of RMC Chapter 514, entitled First Amendment Artisan and Sidewalk Speakers. Item I1.4 is an amendment to RMC Chapter 515, changing the name of the chapter to Sidewalk Vendors, Artists, and Performers. In addition, adding definitions to clarify permit requirements and First Amendment activity on sidewalks and modify time, place, and manner. And finally, item I1.5 is an amendment to Chapter 8.23, entitled Parks and Recreation, adding a new section, 8.23200. This section will regulate vending in parks and adding reasonable time, place, and manner. In addition, it will create applicable definitions in that section of code. And with that, staff is available for questions.
Mr. Sitting Mayor.
Any questions?
Questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Chomp?
Yes, ma'am.
Just as a matter of practice, we haven't had too many impact analysis come before. I'm curious, why did the impact analysis come before the ordinance? It would seem to me that you do the ordinances first, and then, if you adopt the ordinances, then you do it? Or is the state law related to impact analysis just basically... I mean, I haven't looked at that statute. You know what?
State law did change, and the business impact statement is to be accepted at the first reading.
Okay. But do... Why does it go first? Why doesn't it go after the ordinances on the agenda?
I just think that's the way we order the agenda, really.
Okay.
Because when you take the vote, and I'm lumping all of these together, if you will, but if you... When you take the vote, you should accept that the business impact statement was prepared per state law.
Oh, okay. So, we won't take the motion until we take the motion on the ordinances?
Right. And the motions would be in the order that I laid out.
Okay. I get you.
So, can you just clarify for me? I mean, I know with, like, the sidewalk vendors and the performing artists, this seems like it would make it much easier and conducive for them?
Yes, it should. It should. We're trying to simplify what I call a complex process, so we're trying to simplify that.
Well, my phone didn't ring off the hook, so I think that probably...
A lot of work has gone into this. This is, as you know, about a year and a half in the making.
Right, right. And I really appreciate that, because I know that this has sort of been a long journey, and they follow it very closely, too. So, I just wanna make sure, and it looks like you've done it in all of this. So, I really appreciate that for really working with them. Thanks.
And kudos to the attorney's office, who's sitting behind me, who did most of the work.
I'll make a motion to accept the business impact statement?
Wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. We do have public comment. David Shakar?
Afternoon, Madam Mayor and honored councilpeople. My name is David Shakar. I'm an independent artist, and I believe that I'm the, so far, the only artist that sets up his easel on the streets of Reno and sketches people's faces in a realistic manner in about 20 minutes. I appreciate also, like Mike Chomp said, the hard work that the city attorneys did. They've improved the code a lot, but nonetheless, I suggest that there's a couple of issues that may not pass constitutional muster should they go to federal district court. And what that is, there are Title VIII, Chapter 8.23, Parks and Registration of Vending, and Title V, Chapter 5.15, Sidewalk Vendors and Artist Performers. Title VIII, Section 8.23.080B allows expressive speech that's not likely to dilute or cause confusion. Does anybody know what dilute or cause confusion is? That's where you use the acronym WTF. WTF does dilute or cause confusion mean? A special event permit holder needs to tell... All they need to do is tell RPD that my presence in a special event with an easel, even though I'm in the public fora, abiding by time, place, and manner restrictions, and I'm on a public sidewalk, all he has to do is say, hey, that guy's diluting the event. Then, RPD would come by. I don't have a problem that RPD comes by, because it's been my experience, every time they've approached me, they've always been very courteous, they've been very congenial. We have a professional police force, and so far, I haven't been arrested. But that language, dilute or cause confusion, is too vague. Supreme Court has said that a common man exercising common understanding does not know what conduct is specifically prohibited. Federal court will rule, if it would go to that, that that language, dilute or cause confusion, is void for vagueness. Equally confusion is Section 8.23.210, Paragraph VI. It's a 30-foot rule. Basically, you can't vend within 30 feet of the entrance or exit of a special event. And they also use a language in there that you could do your expressive activities in a special event, provided the expressive conduct does not unreasonably interfere or cause confusion with the message of the promoter. Again, what does that mean, cause confusion? That's very subjective. I think it's void for vagueness. The 30-foot ban is an arbitrary and irrational exercise of power, having no substantial relation to the public health, safety, welfare, and morals. Courts have ruled in similar statutes that its prior restraint violates your First Amendment, equal protection, and due process clauses of the Constitution. And that is a well-settled doctrine of constitutional law that states, if a regulation is not narrowly tailored, is not narrowly tailored, if it burdens substantially more speech than is necessary to further the government's legitimate interest, then it's constitutionally invalid. But I would ask you not to take my word for it, as somebody that's gone past basic constitutional law.
Thank you, Mr. Shakar.
Thank you for the consideration of making this, those two sections of that ordinance invalid, if it's to keep out of federal court.
Thank you. Christopher Corbett?
Good afternoon again, Christopher Corbett. I'd just like to read from the Citizens' Rulebook, page 15. "Give Me Liberty or Give Me Death." Patrick Henry shocked. Young Christian attorney Patrick Henry saw why a jury of peers is so vital to freedom. It was March 1775, when he rode into a small town of Culpeper, Virginia. He was totally shocked by what he saw. There, in the middle of the town square, was a minister tied to a whipping post, his back laid bare and bloody, with the bones of his ribs showing. He had been scorched mercilessly like Jesus with whips laced with metal. Patrick Henry is quoted as saying, "When they stopped beating him, I could see the bones of his rib cage. I turned to someone and asked what the man had done to deserve such a beating as this, scorched for not taking a license." The reply given was that the man being scorched was a minister who refused to take a license. He was one of 12 who were locked in jail because they refused to take a license. A license often becomes an arbitrary control by government that makes a crime out of what ordinarily would not be a crime. It turns a right into a privilege. Three days later, they scorched him to death. This was the incident which sparked Christian attorney Patrick Henry to write the famous words, which later became the rallying cry of the revolution. "What is that gentleman's wish? What would they have? Is life so dear or peace so sweet as to be purchased at the price of chains and slavery? Forbid it, Almighty God. I know not what course others may take, but as for me, give me liberty or give me death." Later, he made this part of his famous speech at St. John's Episcopal Church in Richmond, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Levatter?
Ted Levatter, for the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this code is unconstitutional for the following five reasons. It constitutes prior restraint, allows for the unbridled discretion of law enforcement, it is void for vagueness, it destroys the possibility of anonymity, a cornerstone of free speech, and most simply, it is discriminatory in the sense that it places restriction on First Amendment speakers, not imposed on other persons. Now, I could provide you with details, but that would be a waste of everybody's times, because we are not here today to discuss questions of constitutionality. Those kinds of questions are debated by lawyers and answered in courts. The decision before you today, like all meaningful decisions made at this level of government, are really questions of morality. Not what can we do, but what ought we do. Ladies and gentlemen, we all have a moral responsibility to defend the rights and work to mitigate the suffering of our neighbors. If this code is approved, not only will you be chilling the natural rights of uninformed citizens, you will be complicit in perpetuating the suffering of the most disadvantaged members of our community. To best understand your moral duty, it is imperative that you both remember your oath to protect the Constitution and understand the ethical duties that imposes. All humans are born with natural rights. They are not conferred by virtue of citizenship or economic status, but endowed by our Creator. The Constitution simply recognizes our natural rights and establishes a system of government, that's you, to prevent vulnerable classes of persons from being deprived of their rights. The highest moral responsibility of all governments and its agents is to protect the rights of the minority from oppression by the majority. The most powerful members of a society are secure their rights by virtue of their wealth and status, and do not need government protection. By contrast, it is the disadvantaged, impoverished, and fringe members of a society whose rights are chilled when government loses sight of its guiding purpose and begins placing barriers between people and their God-given rights. If you choose to place restrictions on the free exercise of the First Amendment rights, it will not be the wealthy or the well-connected who suddenly find themselves without a podium to stand on or an audience to receive them. You must understand that if this code is passed, what was once a birthright to all human beings becomes a privilege to those who can afford it. These restrictions will disproportionately impact the very people whose rights governments were established to protect. Senior citizens, veterans, teens, people, those with mental and emotional disorders, and the poor will find themselves now facing additional obstacles and left without an alternative. Depriving Reno citizens of their rights is not the only immoral consequence of this code, but it also eliminates opportunities for impoverished citizens to alleviate their suffering through the healing power of self-expression. It robs our community of the personal and communal transformation that is possible when we experience and interact with powerful ideas, beautiful works of art, and the interesting people who dedicate their lives to sharing this experience with others. Ladies and gentlemen, because this law is unconstitutional, it confers no new duties upon me, and I do not recognize your right to license my First Amendment rights. Because this law is immoral, I do feel it imposes a duty on me, because I too have a responsibility to protect the most vulnerable members of this community, and I will make sure that you have to defend this law in the courts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a motion before we took comment. Can we return to that?
Yeah, I'll move to accept the business impact statement.
Motion and a... Did I hear a second? Okay. Discussion? Another motion?
Maybe we... Do we have to accept the business impact statement, first of all? To continue on to consider the ordinance?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. In looking up the new state law, it says it has to be passed in this meeting, before the meeting which you adopt the ordinance, but you could take it out of order if you choose to.
I prefer to hear a staff report on the ordinance itself.
We have a staff report.
Oh, on the specifics of the ordinance? From the attorney's office? Do... Okay, okay. Well, then, I'll follow up with questions.
Said, do we want to hit I12 first? Is that... How do you want to proceed? Do you want to move forward with I12 first? Ordinance introduction?
I12. Well, they're kind of all of a package.
Yeah, we can take I altogether, as far as discussion and questions.
Okay. Questions?
Well, I'll start, because I've been liaison to the Parks Commission, and this comes to you by way of recommendation from the Parks Commission. After maybe five or six meetings of talking about this ordinance in detail, and Mr. Skaw was staff to it, and Mr. Chomp also, thank you for your good work on this effort. I think, having watched it, the Parks Commission, they were pretty sick of it and wanted to talk about parks. And even though this is related to parks, it got into sidewalks and issues, but two members of the Parks Commission, one who kind of termed out during it, but now is on the Arts and Culture Commission, which also took a look at this, he was very opposed to it, as was another individual who is no longer on the Parks Commission, but has a risk management perspective. And their concerns were somewhat related about, we might be going down into a slippery slope on First Amendment restraint. And I just wanted to ask Mr. Skaw if you think we're, you know, vulnerable if we adopted this ordinance?
Craig Skaw, from the City Attorney's Office. This matter came to us as a request from the Arts and Culture Commission to clarify whether licenses were required for artists selling in parks. And as a result of research, we found that there had been some new case law. And so, I think we were vulnerable under our old ordinances, but after a lot of painstaking research, I've put together the best ordinance that I can to ensure that we are not vulnerable to a lawsuit. And for instance, all of the challenges that you've heard from public comment have all been considered and addressed in this ordinance. So, I think that this ordinance is designed very much in keeping with protecting the city.
Let me... Okay. Are we having a lot of problems with people selling stuff in the park? I mean, was there a rash? I mean, was it becoming a problem?
Well, the problem can be defined a couple of ways, because we do have special events. We have people coming in all the time, trying to use our parks for commercial purposes. Whether that commercial purpose is truly commercial or expressive is the big question that is answered by this ordinance and by the courts that this ordinance follows. There certainly have been instances where people have wanted to do this, and the number of people wanting to do it is growing. But a problem can also be defined on whether or not somebody wants to challenge this as a lawsuit. And there, we do have a problem, because one person in particular has stated several times that he intends to challenge this, and we just heard a second person say that now. So, yes, definitely, we have a problem in that the First Amendment needs to be complied with in our ordinances, and that's what I've painstakingly tried to accomplish.
Okay. I'll also spend my questions in...
Don't you guys love it when you go to cities, and there are artists everywhere, and there are people selling, you know, their local goods? We really don't have a lot of that here, because it's been so restricted. My goal was, whatever... I am the liaison on the Arts and Culture Committee. My goal was to make it much easier for these artists to have their work, and I've spoken to many of them. I'll walk up and down the river, and I absolutely love it, and I think it adds to our culture that when we walk outside, you hear the man playing his trumpet outside, or, you know, his horn, and things like this. I mean, if you go to other cities like Austin and San Francisco, I mean, I just really feel that we have to have an ordinance that's conducive to this type of environment. I mean, it really adds to a city's culture. That was my original intent with looking at this. And from what I understand, the City of Sparks has something... And from what I understand, the City of Sparks has something that, you know, the artists are...that they're okay with adopting, and the City of Reno, I think, needs to look at that. And, you know, we've been going on and on and on and on about this. I don't want to waste any more resources and your time, and I think you've done a great job, and I think, you know, you've really looked at this. But this truly concerns me, and I think, you know, like I said, going back to the artists and speaking to them, we looked at the City of Sparks. They really, really like that. I don't understand why we couldn't just adopt the same one that the City of Sparks has.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Delgado?
What does the City of Sparks have? What's the big difference? What are we doing that's different from them? Do we know? Or is there a summarized snippet that you guys can provide for us?
I see Mr. Levatter's hand up. The chair would like to re...
I'd like to hear from our attorney.
Oh, okay. Okay. He wasn't starting, so I...okay.
Councilmember Delgado, the City of Sparks has a system that is very similar to ours. In fact, a lot of our wording comes from theirs, as well as similar wording in the City of Henderson. One of the key differences that the artists are complaining about is a matter that is purely policy-driven, and that has to do whether a business license is required or not. That seems to be a big hub of the complaints and is something that is purely within your discretion. We, under the current ordinances, would continue the practice we had in the past of requiring a business license for sales of artistic or expressive goods. The actual display, creation, and so forth, those aren't...those don't require a license. The license process was actually made easier here by clarifying that it's only after somebody in the course of a calendar year earns $600 through the sales in our parks that they require a business license. And the reasoning behind that is that to the extent that they are conducting a business through a sale, they are not...they are both exercising their First Amendment rights but doing it through the means of a business. They are enjoying all of the police services, park maintenance, all of the services that we provide, and so to impose a $60 per $20,000 of income yearly fee seem to be quite reasonable as their contribution. That does not mean...that does not prevent them from exercising their First Amendment rights in every other manner without obtaining a business license. But again, the business license piece of it is broken out and would be something that you can have a policy decision about and appears to be the linchpin of the complaints that I've understood by a lot of the artists. If you got rid of paying a normal business license fee, a lot of the complaints would go away. I don't think that's a...I mean, I'll just say that's a policy decision for your consideration.
Any other questions?
Just from my standpoint on that issue, I don't know how you would distinguish between someone selling art out there and a hot dog vendor. I mean, if they've got a business and they're operating a business, collecting money from people, they need to be licensed.
That's not...they don't have a problem with being licensed, but there's a lot of confusion, Dwight, with...would you like to speak on that?
If you'd like, I could address that, too.
Sure.
And this also goes to Councilmember Brekis's point about some of the commissioners, and it has to do with the demands, the legal demands of the First Amendment. When we say to a member of the public, "You cannot go into a park and conduct a garage sale or set up your, you know, any other business that is normally brick and mortar." We don't want our parks filled with commercial enterprises. So the Ninth Circuit has interpreted the First Amendment to say that a sale of an expressive activity, painting, an original painting, is protected First Amendment. So a sale of a commercial item, we can ban without any problem. We have to allow the sale of an expressive item, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, of course. But that sale, the difference between what we ban and what is allowed to be sold, you have to have a definition, a dividing line between the two. That dividing line then runs right up a foul of or against all the nuances of First Amendment law as interpreted by the Ninth Circuit. So we have put in there the standard and examples to try and make that standard easier. And I will be the first to tell you, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that this is a legalistic definition. But the courts of the Ninth Circuit had the City of Los Angeles try to simply come forward and say that we should do it with a simple standard. First Amendment protective sales are okay. Sales that are not protected are not okay. And the court said that under a vagueness standard, that doesn't tell anybody anything. You've got to be more specific in what you're doing, and that's where these definitions come from, was that analysis of what the legal standard is, so that's set out, plus examples and factors of how it applies. Granted that that does make for a little difficult reading, but the actual practice of it is going to be pretty simple. Artists selling their original art can go out in that park without any problem. End of story. There are some dividing lines, like normally the sale of bowls. Bowls are something that Walmart sells. They're also something that a potter sells, and to the extent that people could be out in the parks, just the sale of a utilitarian bowl is not protected by the First Amendment and would be barred under this. Flexibility is built in that if that bowl is then put into amazing shapes and artistic matters, then it becomes an expression of that artist's...well, the artist's expression and is protected under the First Amendment. Those lines need to be drawn, and what we were hoping to do is, because of the different categories and so forth, is to have a brochure through the Arts and Culture Commission, also do training to make sure that our staff is clear about what that line is. But in order to protect the city from lawsuits, we need to be clear that we have a legally defensible line, and that's what I've created.
Any other questions? Would there be...we heard reference to what Sparks is doing. Would there be an opportunity for you to present that to us if we continued this to even our next meeting in October, to provide that information, that comparative information that you made reference to? Is that something the council would like to see?
I would.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, too. And is Sparks's ordinance...was it more clearly defined after? Maybe I'd like to see the before and the after of Sparks. In other words, what happened with them legally and then with the result of...subsequent to that, you know, a red line kind of version or what have you of the before and the after. So we can...I'd just like to see both.
I would be happy to provide that if that's what you would like to do. Do bear in mind that Sparks' ordinance has not been challenged and therefore does not necessarily represent a legally defensible standard.
And we've already been sued over ours, correct?
Historically, we had one about 10 years ago or so, and Sparks had a similar one. Both of them were challenged by the same gentleman, and I recognized, our office recognized right away that ours had problems with it. We settled, and the amounts of attorney's fees which are awarded in First Amendment cases were pretty small. The City of Sparks challenged theirs all the way to the Ninth Circuit, and that's where the standard was established, that not just the creation or display of expressive materials, but also their sale is protected under the Ninth Amendment...pardon me, under the First Amendment. So Sparks then created an ordinance that has a lot of the same elements that we do in trying to set out the differences between what is protected and what is not. But Sparks' ordinance was enacted before these new cases came down with the Ninth Circuit that clarified these definitions. I can't tell you what Sparks would do, but I suspect they would be leaning towards following these same case law precedents if they were looking at their ordinance anew.
But I think they were challenged...they were challenged.
10 years ago.
Yes, and then they went back and modified, and now...
As did we, and we have since...we made those changes with the new case law. Ours are now unconstitutional.
Yeah. I mean, that would be great if you could come back and show us, just because that's not what I'm hearing from Mr. White, and as you know, he was the one that brought forth those complaints. And so, you know, I just want us to find a common ground with the artists and the City of Reno and making it much easier. Mr. Levatter, would you like...you're back there jumping out of your chair. Can I just...
Yeah, might I recommend you invite Mr. White down here to actually make that presentation? He is directly working with the City of Sparks to create a code that will meet constitutional standards. And just to talk briefly about what is happening in Sparks, I was in Sparks for the rib cook-off inside Victorian Square, set up right next to a guy who paid thousands of dollars for his booth, and I was selling my expressive wares, free of business license, free of restriction, free of taxation, because that's what's required constitutionally.
Yeah, but that doesn't make sense either.
But then that's unfair. Then that's unfair to the one...
No, no, wait. It's not about fair. It's about God-given rights. That commercial vendor does not have a God-given right to sell his wares that have been shipped in from China. I have a God-given right to not only share my ideas, but to have...be compensated for my speech. Because what you have to remember is, in that situation, it's not money, it's not profit. When somebody gives me a dollar, they are expressing themselves as well. It's a form of expression that works both ways. I have a God-given right. Please protect it. Invite Steve White down. They're going to give you one presentation. Mr. White will give you a different one. I asked for a balanced presentation on this issue.
But how does that not infringe on business?
You can't...it doesn't matter if it fringes on business. This is primary to anything else you do. This is the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States.
We'll agree to disagree on that one, but I agree that I think we're all...
You think there are things that take precedence, the First Amendment or the Constitution?
I'm not going to debate with you.
I think you're interpreting it wrong.
No, no, no. Have you read White v. Sparks? You haven't read White v. Sparks? Have you? Thank you.
No, but anyway, okay.
I think you're absolutely wrong.
Yeah, okay, so...
I don't care. If you're conducting business...
Let's move on. Let's move on. I just want us to come to an agreement.
Are we looking for a continuation? Are we looking for a continuation? And what specific information do we need to get from staff?
I think, Madam Chair, if I may, I would be interested in continuing it, but I am interested in removing the business license requirement for the artists. I think that a lot of these artists will have business licenses to conduct other business when they're in the park doing their First Amendment activities. I don't think we should put a licensing burden on them. I do think that is over-restrictive. And I guess one thing is, you know, this license...these ordinances get challenged on their face, is my understanding. They don't have to have, you know, the brochure and the law enforcement officer was, you know, not aware of the code when he, you know, ejected this person from the park. It's just like, hey, here's the document, let's bring it into the Ninth Circuit. And there is a distinction, very well-established, between commercial and First Amendment speech. It's just such a longstanding tradition. So I tend to see it from that avenue, and I think maybe if we can start pulling out, like you said, and I hadn't heard that before, Mr. Scah, that maybe this policy decision of not having the business license, that's the route I would like to go. I think we have other licensee priorities, like the cab drivers that we made the decision a couple months ago, the independent contractors, but I think when we get into these First Amendment areas, I think we should be pulling out of this one.
Well, I disagree. I think you've got to have the business license component to it. And I'm going to just tell you right now, I'm going to take my legal advice from my attorney, not from Ted Levatter. So I mean, when it comes down to it, I agree that you can't...if they want to go in there and use the park and paint and do those things, absolutely, I think they should be able to do that, without any requirements from the city at all. I think they should be able to go there, and just like anybody else can use the park, they should be able to go there and set up their easel or whatever and paint or do whatever it is that they do. I agree with that 100 percent, and there should be no requirements, no restrictions from us other than the same restrictions we have for anybody else that uses the park. But if you're conducting business in our parks, you need to have a business license, just like anybody else would be required to have a business license. And I don't think we can discriminate against...
We just had this discussion about the ped...the bicycles in the downtown. I mean, we had this very discussion about while trying to...you don't want to mistreat one group by specially treating another, and there's that...I understand the nuances, but I would like to see, you know, what Sparks has done and bring this back.
Many cities do this very successfully.
Right. But I'm just saying, if someone's selling products, I mean, if you're selling paintings in a park and not...and you don't have the business license, you don't have to collect sales tax, you don't have to do any of the things that are required of other businesses, where if I go into an art gallery and I purchase a piece of art, I do have to pay sales tax. They do have to have a business license, and I think it was...
Totally different.
It's...I just...I think that you've got to require it. And Ted, I'm not going to take my legal advice from you.
Mr. Manager, do you have enough direction from council at this point, do you think?
If I can, Madam Mayor, just clarify. Do you want staff to bring back the same ordinances that we're presenting today? And in addition to that, the Sparks ordinance and a brief analysis of what they did?
I think that's...yeah, I think that's what...yes. I think that's what we're asking for.
And then the determination of whether or not to license would be the body's decision at that time. So I guess you'll have that conversation when we bring this all back.
Correct. And give us reference points.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. A motion to that effect, please?
Motion to continue this item and bring back Sparks' ordinance for further discussion.
And other options?
And other options.
How much time do we need to put on that request? How much time do you think you need? Can that be by our next meeting this month? Is that adequate time? Or should it be the first meeting in November?
I was going to suggest the first meeting in December.
November, December?
I'm sorry. Second meeting in November.
Second meeting in November.
Yes, sorry.
Is that okay with the motion?
I'm getting my month confused.
Motion maker? Okay. Is there a second? Second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We do have a 3:00 time certain for item F4. I've also had a request that we take a five-minute comfort break, so we will recess for five minutes and return. We'll return to the public hearing, item F4. Madam Secretary?
For the record, proper notice was given. We received one email in support and one email of concern.
And, Madam Mayor, we're doing F4, correct?
Correct.
Which is Bill Number 6875, an ordinance pending in Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.08, Zoning, Section 18.08, 201, entitled "Permitted Uses by Base Zone District" and Section 18.08, 405, Regional Center and Transit Quarter Overlay Districts Together with Other Matters Property Relating thereto Establishing the Midtown Zoning Districts and Development and Land Use Standards for Each District.
Do we need...we can have discussion first, correct? We will have discussion first. All right. We have...does council want to begin discussion and then go to public comment, or would you prefer to hear from citizens first to see what their concerns are before we have our discussion?
Madam Vice Mayor, I would prefer first a report from staff that frames the issue before us, if that's okay.
Jodrea Goodwin, Housing and Neighborhood Development Administrator, for the record. That sounds like a broken record. The...so this is a zoning text amendments to establish zoning standards for the... The, so, this is a zoning text amendments to establish zoning standards for the midtown district, which was created in the South Virginia, South Virginia Street Transit Oriented Development Corridor about a year ago. The, it establishes density for the commercial and the residential sections, it establishes setbacks, and in addition to allowable uses, the, the basics, pretty much. I thought I was really ready for this. So it has some architectural requirements, prohibited materials to try and maintain the neighborhood characteristic as, while allowing some flexibility in standards. It establishes building orientation for each area, both the residential and the commercial section, as well as signs and operating hours for the residential area, and those are the basics of it, as you could see in the staff report. If you want more details, I can go into those, but.
All right. Questions?
Ms. Breckus? Suppose I'll start, because the majority of this plan, this text amendment is in my ward. I want to thank everyone who participated. I think the, I heard the Planning Commission had eight workshops on this, and with a lot of participation, I attended one back in May, and so I know a lot of time and effort went into this, and I'd like to show appreciation to everyone who participated, particularly our planning commissioners, because it was quite a focus for them. I have a few rather general questions, and then I have a number of technical ones that we'll see, you know, how, how much we want to get into, but my first general question is, in the preamble to the text amendment, I think it's the applicability section, to the, I guess where it's called out as, as an, as a, you know, I guess we're calling these overlays, or it's an, it's a, it's a district, it's an overlay within an overlay, the midtown applicability. It says in A that this is, is identified in the South Virginia Street Transit Oriented Development Plan within the City of Reno Master Plan. And when I came on last fall, I was given a copy of the, of the master plan, and I paged through, and I haven't seen that map in there, and I just, the, the plan that I have of the South Virginia TOD is dated June 26, 2007. Was there a, was there a plan that was reproduced?
It was adopted. The amendment was adopted October 24th of 2012.
Okay, so, okay, I, I mean, I, I got mine in November. Do you mind putting up the map to begin with? I, I think it would, I don't know what map it would.
I have two versions of the map. You can tell me which one was.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's, okay, oh, yeah, but that shows midtown station area, that I think is, yeah, the one that relates to the land use regulations. Because here's what it says in this zoning ordinance. It says, as identif, the district consists of all, it doesn't say a plat, plan number or a map number, it says identifies two sections within the district, the commercial and the residential, so.
This is that map.
That's that map?
This is commercial, this is residential.
Okay, it's just, it seems confusing, because it looks to me like it's a transportation map, because it has the, the, the bus, you know, the, the rapid, but, okay, so that's, that's that. And then, does this plan, the South Virginia Transit Oriented Development Plan, as amended, you know, back last October, does it have a conformity table of land use of zoning districts that conform to both this residential and commercial? Lot of, because the master plan zoning conformity is a requirement, I'm just wondering.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager. What base zoning would apply?
Well, what zoning districts correspond to each of those?
MU, they're all base zoned MU.
No, but, but when this is adopt, okay, so everything's MU?
Everything's MU.
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
Okay, and if we approve this text amendment, then you'll be running zoning map amendments for individual parcels?
No, they're all, they're all MU now, and they'll still be MU.
Oh, okay, so you're not going to change the official zoning map, then?
No, the districts, the commercial versus residential are identified in the, in the master plan through the station area, which is how we've done it on, on all the TODs and regional centers, is establish the districts through the master plan, which is typically where you would see the direction on, say, density or FAR. Sometimes that carries over to the zoning also, if it's changing within the area, but the, the overall idea behind the density and FAR would be in the master plan. And then this amendment is going in and establishing the standards associated with each one of those districts.
Okay, so you're not, you, you, the zoning map will stay the same, it's the, okay, I see how you're going to do it. Okay, those are my general questions, thank you.
Mr. Delgado?
Okay, you bet. Anyone else? Questions? Or comments? Okay.
Should we take public comment now, to give you a moment? Great. Sam Gettle?
I'm here to support the agenda item, as is, our family has remodeled nine units in both wards one and three over the last 20 years, and I live in the district. I want to give thanks to the city staff, Jody, Claudia Hansen, and Fred, and others who have made a balanced and fair agreement that finally allows for stability in these neighborhoods with wonderful old houses. Over and over, almost if not all people I have spoken to and the wording in the plan speak of keeping and augmenting the character of the neighborhood. In fact, I would prefer less density in the residential section, but can live with the plan. I have been involved with code enforcement issues for about 20 years, and I can speak accurately that the basis for a lot of the code enforcement problems is the management problems associated with unstable properties that have a high percentage of California owners, it hasn't worked, California speculator owners with the density of 30 units per acre. It has, and those were from about 1960. It hasn't worked for 53 years, and it's not going to work in the future. The speculators have nearly destroyed the character of the midtown area, and the fact that the area is so desirable is, is in spite of and not because of those changes back then. I want to bring to the council's attention that the 30-unit-per-acre density is devastating to the neighborhoods and creates instability. The 30-unit acre has been tried for over 50 years and is a miserable failure. Remember the speculators that demanded ownership of Lunsford's Park and the street closure along Riverside Drive, and remember the street closure at the Sienna Hotel. There have been many declarations of the speculations of why the city must give in to their desires. These, these over, these have not panned out over the years. In conclusions, please approve the plan, and don't be fooled into increasing the density to prolong a total fail and unstable plan. In a separate but related, I ask the council to make sure that code enforcement coincides with the planning, because so many issues are because there's a, there's a discrepancy between the actual code enforcement and what they're allowed to do versus what the planning says. And case in point, as I was meeting with, with Alex today, as I'm adopting six different properties, their landscape easements, because the California owners will never complete, they never maintain, and it's people like me that step in and spend the funds and hire the people to maintain property that they should be doing, but they don't do it. And when you live in multi, and, and these are people that live in multimillion-dollar neighborhoods like Zephyr Cove, Incline Village, San Francisco, and why can't they be here to help the rest of us with the heavy lifting? Thank you.
Thank you. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, this is Brian Raiden with Marmont Properties. I wanted to put that map down there, hopefully you guys can see that as well. As you know, we've modeled or remodeled close to 80 residential units in and around the midtown area on both sides of Virginia. As I go, as I talk about the plan, the first thing I want to say is that, in general, we support many of the density mitigation and adjacency standards of the midtown plan, which I think accomplishes what really people are looking to do, and that is to maintain the character of this unit, of this neighborhood. There's a couple myths out there that I wanted to address that I've heard throughout this process. Number one, that the midtown area is a single-family neighborhood. As we know, or anybody who wants to go back and look, it's been zoned multifamily or greater for a long time. To its detriment, in the past, there was a lot of schlocky development put up that exceeded far beyond what the 30 units per acre would allow. If you take a look at what the midtown plan allows now under 30 units per acre with the density mitigation and adjacency standards applied, what does 30 units per acre look like? We're talking two townhomes, basically two duplexes on a standard midtown lot, versus what's being proposed now, the 21 units per acre, which would be a single-family home, let's say, and then one duplex. So, don't be fooled that 30 units per acre is going to result in a lot of penitentiary style cinder block dwellings. That's just not going to happen with the standards that are put out here with the Really, to be perfectly honest, I have four properties that are affected by this plan within the zone, two of which have development potential, the other two I'm going to leave exactly as they are, just kind of come in and, and clean them up as necessary, but they're very nice units, we've got responsible people in those, and those are exactly the kind of people you're looking for to create and to continue this midtown retail success story. The midtown success story is based on rooftops and the proximity to these rooftops, and reducing density only serves to hurt that. I can't imagine, if you look at the zoning plan I have here, in urban planning in general, people want to walk a quarter mile or less to make a, a retail corridor vibrant. If you look at how this blue line here is overlaying over the plan, that's this proposed reduction in density, and it is a reduction in density. The SUP is meaningless to any kind of investor. Nobody would spend $10,000 to go through a high politicized process to try to get up to their, to get that extra unit. That extra unit means a lot to Reno. If you count the number of parcels in there, that's potentially 20 to 30 million dollars of construction that will not happen in the town of Reno, and those are, you know, up to 200 residents for, that would be utilizing this retail. So, basically, we support the plan in general, but we encourage at least that parking can be strengthened to match the Wells district. We're happy to provide more onsite parking, but we strongly disagree with the 21 units. What we would suggest is to go to the 30 units, but tighten up the density mitigation and adjacency standards such that the kind of junk that has been built in the past cannot be built, and this plan supports that if you follow the letter of the law and the five, you know, what we're supporting is these standards. So that's basically my three minutes. Looks like I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Raiden. We'll have questions later that I'm sure you'll be able to respond to. Thank you. Bernie Carter?
My name is Bernie Carter, and thank you for the opportunity today to chat with you about the midtown project. We've been involved with this, I think, 16, 16 months of meetings, and we are concerned today about the retail portion of it, which is the dark blue section that you see before you today. We requested the plan be adopted in the retail perspective with the exception of two changes, and these changes will be changes that come as a result, not of the actual plan that's before you, but would be added to the plan. These are currently requirements that are in the South Virginia Street Transit Corridor that would be applied to midtown, and we're requesting that they be modified to some extent. The first request is that the FAR, which is now being evaluated, and from what I understand, will go to the Planning Commission relatively soon, that that FAR be established at .25. And what that does is that allows builders and developers to have some flexibility in the development plan. Part of the challenge, and that's, will be recommended, my understanding is that will be recommended by staff to the Planning Commission. What we'd like to do is incorporate it in the midtown area so that there's no question about it during this, this time period. The second request is that we modify the landscape requirements. So landscape requirements today are 20%. What that facilitates, as an example, most of the independent, commercial lots are 50 by 120 feet. This plan requires that the parking come off the back part, so off the alley. So as you can see in the illustration, there's a 25-foot parking area off the alley. The plan also requires that the pedestrian access be a five-foot access from the parking to the entrance of the building, which must face the front of the building. So if you look at that, and there's a 10-foot sidewalk, which is part of the plan also, the landscape requirement is 20%, which means 1,200 square feet. So if you put that on the front of the building, which basically is, is the primary option, that puts you 35 feet from the front of the sidewalk to the front of the building, which seems to be very onerous to us. So we're requesting that that be modified in the plan to, and be incorporated in the plan at a, at a 5% number. This is typical, can be found in, in other areas in our community, some of the landscape requirements are zero based on the, on the propensity of the FAR. Keep in mind what we're trying to do in midtown. In midtown, and I'll show you an example of one that, of a community that just redid it, and I think is a good example for the midtown. And that is, as you can see, parking, parallel parking, streetscaping, which is not considered part of the landscaping, wide sidewalk, and then the commercial buildings. And that's what I request, that we do this, that we incorporate these two modifications of the plan as part of the plan. The balance of the plan has been thought out, we agree with all of it, we've worked, like I said, for 14 months with staff and with other people in the community to facilitate this, and we encourage you to approve the plan today with those two modifications. By the way, that's my granddaughter. She's four, she's five years old now, and I've always said that I want to be able to take my four-year-old granddaughter down to shop in midtown, and this is actually Burley Game, California, but she's, as you can tell, a shopper. So, thank you very much, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Billy Andrews?
I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, you did note that you don't wish to speak. Your comments are, I am for the MF21 zoning with MF30 allowed with an SUP in the residential section of midtown. I am for the other ordinance. Betty Dodson also expressed didn't wish to speak, still so, and the comment is, if you honor the work that has been done in numerous planning sessions and approved by the Planning Commission for the residential zoning. I have no other forms requesting to speak. Is there anyone who would like to, who has not filled one out? You can come forward. All right, back to the council table. Mr. Delgado, you're part of this, your ward three is part of this area as well?
Yeah, with, with respect, and I'm counsel, and this is mainly in counsel, and Brex is a part of midtown. I just had a question regarding some of the line staff. If you could put up a map really quick, the midtown district. Can you explain to me how the, the lining, the bordering of, of the eastern, the western portion there, the commercial, the line right between the commercial and the residential was, was, was set up?
So, at a workshop held in March of 2012, the residents and property owners of the community actually drew the line on the map, and that's what was used, where they felt like it, it's changed from primarily commercial to residential.
Okay, so, I mean, that, I, I was wondering if there was a certain science to it all, but it sounds like it's community involvement behind it, the eight different meetings I'm assuming, from all the residents there, okay. From the 21 to the 30, can somebody, can you give me some conversation as to what happened at some of those meetings, as to where it ended up from 21 to 30, please?
So, originally, in the process, as, as has been mentioned, we had a number of neighborhood meetings, and then the attendees at most of those meetings actually requested it to be 14, density of 14 units per acre, and so we proposed that at, in the first draft that went to Planning Commission. that went to Planning Commission, and there was objection to that and requesting the 30 units per acre. From there, we went to a workshop. We had lots of discussion, lots of illustrations, and this was the compromise piece that, that came out of that discussion and process.
I'll lean to Councilwoman Breckis of, Madam Mayor.
I will disclose that I've met with parties on both sides of this issue, including the partners with Marmot yesterday, and they have presented to all of us concerns that were pretty much expressed by Mr. Raden a bit earlier. Specifically, can you respond to, first of all, the characterization that going from 21 to 30 equates to one dwelling unit? It would be two duplexes, which would be four dwelling units, correct? Versus a single family and a duplex, which would be three dwelling units? Is that accurate?
So, I have some illustrations that were used during the process that I'll put up here on the overhead, so you can see, and the average lot is about 7,013 square foot, so. I'm not sure. So, this is 21 units to the acre? And that's 30 units to the acre? I don't open that. This high-tech stuff. So, as you can see, on the average unit, it is one additional unit on a, on the average-sized lot.
Okay.
If you, and this one is 9,900-ish square feet, and so it adds two units to that lot.
Could, there was a suggestion that the same effect could be accomplished through design standards versus an SUP or a site map process. Talk through the functionality of each of those, and the, when you do talk through that, please specifically address the public's opportunity to be involved in each of those processes if we were to go forward.
You mean in terms of the functionality of if an SUP or a site plan review were used?
Correct, correct, or specific design standards to accomplish?
If specific design standards, so the proposal was, there are five different design standards in the amendment that you're required to use three of them in certain, pretty much always, but three of the five. The proposal was if it was 30 units for the, above 21 units per acre, you would be required to do five of those to kind of mitigate and blend in better, at least from an appearance standpoint. The, the site plan review would be a staff review, so if you wanted to go from 21 to 30, you could apply to staff to review that and determine if it was an appropriate increase or if there were any other issues that would prohibit that. The cost is less than an SUP. Obviously, it's a staff review. The SUP would go through a full public process, and the public would, they're noticed in a site plan review, and they're also noticed in an SUP process as well. Goes before council?
The site plan review can be appealed to the hearing officer, and then that decision can be appealed to council. Special use permit goes to Planning Commission, and then that can be appealed to council. And all, the site is noticed on both, and the postcards go out on both.
And what's the cost difference to the applicant?
We're reviewing the fees right now. I think they're probably going to be pretty close. They're both about $5,000 right now. We're looking at bringing both of them down in the 2,000 to 3,000 range.
I also spoke with one of the planning commissioners who was very confident that the public process had been followed with, with respect, but that maybe there was still not enough commonality between this recommendation, potentially, and what was done for the Wells Plan. How, was that ever part of the conversation, and how was that addressed?
In comparison with the Wells Plan? I think the, the Wells had.
There was, there was actually discussion about the Wells Plan. It helped inform the, the design standards. It helped kind of talk about context in that sense. It was not talked about in the context of comparing the two beyond, that it was like, they did a good job, these are kind of things you need to think about with the design standards and that type of thing, and, and maintaining the character, not in terms of density or, or going that far to that, or the parking or to that level.
Sorry about that, Claudia. Fred Turner, Community Development Director. And just another big difference between the Wells Avenue Plan and this process, just from an operational standpoint, resources, is that we had a consultant hired within the city to help us with the Wells Avenue Plan, and at that time, the, the city had more funds to put towards outside consultants to augment existing city staff. So, that was a big difference also.
And on the process, or during the, during the process, I think there was more consensus in Wells. There were, the areas weren't quite as different. You didn't have the commercial, well, you have different districts in Wells, but they kind of blend together a little bit more in Wells and more common issues where this is really a greater difference between the desires, I guess, of the people in the area.
Thank you. That is all I have. Ms., Ms. Breckis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in general, I, I feel like there's just a few issues that I would really object in here, but in a more general sense, I think the plan is, or the text amendment and the combination of plan is moving toward greater complexity, a lesser ease of usability, and has some vagueness in it that is maybe not at the best practice level that I would hope that we would be moving in this time in our planning efforts. And I'll just, I'll just leave that, you know, comment. So, the, the thing, and I want to pick up on what I've heard in my conversations with people. The first one, I'll start with Mr. Carter's comments. He mentioned, Ms. Hanson, that there's this other effort going on in the whole South Virginia TOD related to FARs, and I, I seem to recall something going on at Regional, but he wanted that dropdown in here. What is, what's going on with FARs in general in the TOD?
So, about a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, I'm looking at Councilwoman Zaja, because I know she remembers very well and is waiting for it anxiously, but for us to go back and review the, all the standards for the transit corridors, the boundaries, the FARs, the densities, introducing the concept of secondary corridors, and reflecting the most recent changes, changes in the regional plan. And so, those, we've gone through numerous Planning Commission workshops. We noticed everybody within the TOD boundaries and had some meetings in September, and the outcome of those meetings, the master plan portion of it is going to Planning Commission next week to review the FAR and density for the TOD corridors overall and to the boundaries overall. The FAR for this area is reflected in the proposed wording for the master plan amendment going next week, and it would, it would reflect the changes from the regional plan that went forward, which is a .25 FAR and then .75 near the transit stations.
Yeah, and I, and I see that, and then that would come with a text amendment, and I guess if it's not specific in the Midtown overlay of the South Virginia overlay, you default to the South Virginia overlay, general standards for FARs, which is, you know, somewhat of that complexity that I have a problem with. I, I think when you're getting down to a .25 FAR and even a .5 FAR, because we started with some FARs that were like 2.25 and all, I just, I've been a proponent of just wiping out any sort of commentary on FAR. And so, but you're saying, under what's working right now, it would, through this other process, this would be a .5 FAR?
It would be .25 anywhere along Virginia Street unless you're adjacent to one of the new rapid bus stations, and then it's a .75.
Okay.
And that's consistent with what was just recently adopted in the regional plan.
Okay. And then on residential density within the commercial, there's this very narrow, narrow window of residential density. I think it's 18 to 30. You've got to make it somewhere within that, is that correct?
In the regional plan?
No, in this, in this overlay for the Midtown commercial. I thought, I thought I saw that still.
I don't believe so.
And I'll, I'll direct you to.
Go ahead.
It is eight, along Virginia Street and one block off, it's a minimum of 18 units per acre. The balance of the commercial section is a maximum of 30.
Yeah, the, within the commercial section.
Within the commercial section.
Yeah, you know, that's a target to hit, and going back to the simplicity that I remember the code once had, it used to just say, "Commercial zoning districts, AC, whatever, multifamilies allowed," you know, and then you work it within what you can do onsite with parking and height limitations. And for simplicity purposes, I, that would be a preference for me in this commercial district, but it doesn't seem like it's one anyone's bringing up. But, you know, what I see is someone doing a mixed-use sort of building, and they want to put someone, one or two units up above, and they're not within that window, and then they have to go through some, you know, they're not compliant. So, so on the commercial, that, that clarifies that. On the, on the residential portion, I did not hear today, but I've heard before, that we were looking at maybe eight-foot side yard setbacks. Is that true on, on the residential section?
As it's written, it is eight-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, you know, I, I have a real problem with that. I think five is a very standard. I think, I've always heard that five is, you know, what a firefighter needs when he's carrying a hose and turning a ladder and all, and eight just drives it, you know, that's more of our large lot. So, I do have an issue with that. Oh, excuse me, one other thing. A constituent called me the other day trying to figure out 24-hour op, or hours of operation within the corridor, in the commercial section. And can you explain to me what the hours of operation will be? Because it seems like on California Avenue, we had so many discussions about hours of operation. We had so many areas and distinctions, and I'm, I'm looking for greater simplicity in knowing what hours of operation are within one area.
Within the TOD, I believe it is 24 hours along Virginia Street regardless of where they're at, in the South Virginia Street TOD.
Well, I think the section I was looking at was, we're not paginated here, but in the commercial, commercial section, number four, it says, "Businesses fronting on South Virginia may go 24 hours." Okay? "Businesses fronting on a side street within one block, 5:00 AM to 1:00 AM." Okay? So, do you have a, and then, can, can you just, if, if, can you show me? I see three different distinctions, and maybe that other map that Mr. Radon put up with the, it was in the aerial, because that one is hard to see, the resolution. And he put up one with, yeah, that one? Okay, so if you're on Virginia Street, can you just point to where Virginia Street is? Okay, you're 24 hours. If you're fronting on a side street within one block, so that first block in, okay, and then, "New businesses." That's interesting that it reads "new businesses," because the other ones, it just says "businesses." I'm wondering what the thinking is. "But not adjacent to South Virginia Street or on a side street within the first block of an intersection may have operating hours between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM." Can you show me where, so that's everything else within that commercial district is only going up to 11:00 PM? Okay, so if you're on the backside of, say, Haskell or one of those, you're, you go till 11:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay, which is, you know, the standard code. Okay, I'm understanding that. Um, okay, and, and I'll get to the density one, which I think is, is kind of the, the big one that's driving here. I agree with Mr. Radon that the special use permit is not a good approach for density. I, I absolutely think that that's a new introduced use of the SUP process that I'm not comfortable with, and I, I said that way back in May when I came to the meetings. To me, the, the method to get additional density is a zoning change, and, and that's the discretion that goes through Planning Commission, City Council. SUPs just go to Planning Commission. I understand that. But, you know, if, if it's all Zone 21 and you want a zoning change to 30 because you want four units rather than the three allowed, you come for a zoning change, and I, I've been working on the work that's involved in the fee changes, and I think the fees would be in line, and they're, they'd be dropped if that recommendation's accepted by the City Council. That's why, Ms. Hanson, I asked about the conformity table in the, in the Midtown section, because if you have a conformity ta, it, it seems like right now, what we've done is we've tied the, the text amendment to the zoning map and not allowed for more or less float of multiple zoning districts within one master plan land use designation. And do, are you following me?
I am.
So, if we picked a middle ground of whether it's on the map or within this plan, saying that both 21 and 30 are, are conforming, and everything is 21 as it is right now, and maybe those that are, exceed their 21 density, because there are these, you know, as Mr. Radon said, these larger than, you know, six units on, zone them MF30 essentially, because that's how they're used, then that's, that I think would be a good balance and get rid of that special use permit process, because I think that does start to bring in other considerations. So.
I would say, and administering something like that would be very challenging, and I would say that that would make it more cumbersome. The, the area, and it gives it some uncertainty for surrounding property owners trying to keep track of what each parcel is zoned. We had problems with that back with the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, where one part on one block, you could have three different zoning districts, which isn't really zoning. Zoning is looking at an area. So, in this, we have, right now, it's unlimited zoning. Prior to the TOD, it was MF43 and MF30, a little bit of 14 in there. I've shown on here, and sorry, I just did this at the last minute, right adjacent to the boundary of the TOD is MF30. There's a little bit of 14 to the south. There's two blocks down here that are MF14, but most of it is MF30 adjacent to the transit corridor. And when looking at what, what the city and what the community can gain through a special use permit, and looking at the five standards that Mr. Radon brought up to potentially meeting those five standards are really the items that we look at on a planning, on a, on a special use permit. It's window placement, building height, and all of those are addressed through the design criteria. And there's also, we've already limited the height in the, in this area to, I think it's two stories? What's that? 35 feet, two stories. So, we, we wrote the design standards in such a way that, to accomplish pretty much everything that we could see to get out of it if a special use permit was to go forward. So, we've limited the height, setbacks are established. We look at the design criteria, specifically addresses, if I can get back to them, building height, windows and porches and their placement for privacy, canopy trees adjacent to the structures, roof pitch similar to those of the adjacent structures, dormers and sloping roofs for upper stories. So, those are typically the things that we had seen on special use permits, and as Jody mentioned earlier, the 21 with the special use permit to 30 was a compromise. I would say the zoning each parcel for how it's already built I would say the zoning each parcel for how it's already built would be extremely cumbersome and difficult to administer and difficult for the neighborhood, I would say, to keep up with and to know what's going in next and what can't go into next.
See, I disagree, you know, I really do. I've worked in neighborhoods where, you know, a half-block will have different character, and that different character actually is helpful in determining when someone comes in with a development project, that discussion of which way to go. It's, I'd much rather talk about one unit up or down than window placement or these other things. And that's where you get into the design standards, which you brought up, that I find some vagueness on those. And I'll, I'll tell you, that, that is an issue, I mean, here's one of them. "Utilizing a roof pitch and overhang of similar to that of adjacent structures." What's similar? "Utilizing dormers and sloping roofs to accommodate upper stories for major renovations and new construction." I, I find a lot of vagueness, and the one that I found particularly vague was the graduated building height and mass in the form of building stepbacks, a minimum of 10 feet in depth. And that one's repeated a fair amount. I don't know what setback you're talking about, a front or a side? And so these are not the most quantifiable design standards. And I know these, when you get these in with a combination of the general SUP findings that we utilize, I think more certainty is provided to everyone with, you know, certain zoning designations and the availability of, of an SUP up to 30, or a zoning change up to 30. That's, that would be the preference I'd prefer to go with. And I would be interested in hearing Mr. Radon's comments on that, because I think that doing projects, you know, he, he's probably got a handle on what, which process they'd rather go through, the SUP or the zoning change. Do you have, do you have input on that?
Or site plan? Please come forward and also identify yourself again.
Brian Radon again. Really, our preference is to have the stringent five adjacency mitigation procedures in there. It's easier for our architect to cut loose on that type of a thing and to tie something in and to make it match the character and feel of the neighborhood, rather than for me as an investor to come in and try to guess what I might be able to get onto a property based on that spot zoning. I would really prefer honestly to have that MF30, but, which I did kind of a poor job of articulating, would be if you went to MF30 or anything greater than 21, that you would be required to meet all five of these adjacency standards, so that we don't have these cinder block penitentiary style apartment buildings that have been done in the past, which you'd have is something that matches the existing character of the neighborhood for the better.
Now, right now and is before us, it's 21 with a special use permit if you want 30. So you get three units. If you want that other one, you're going through the SUP process. Would you rather have to go through a zoning change process or an SUP process to avail yourself of 30? Because as it written right now, you're going in through a master plan amendment and a zoning change process to even consider getting a fourth unit.
Well, as it's drafted right now, I don't see it as.
No, especially as permanent.
As it's drafted right now, I see it as 21 units, because there's no way on earth I would pay $10,000, then go through a highly politicized process to get my project shut down. So I would price the project at 21. I wouldn't price it at 30. So I have some certainty actually with that.
But you wouldn't avail yourself to a zoning change for 30? Okay.
No.
Okay, so you're done. You, you acknowledge it would be three units, and that's the way it goes?
If it's three units, it's three units, but I think that's harmful, not to me and not to my company. 90% of what we own is on the other side of the, the road. But what I think ultimately it's harmful to is what we're trying to accomplish, which is to have a walkable, bikeable, pedestrian-friendly neighborhood that's going to frequent these retail establishments. That's what creates the midtown experience, and rooftops are what create that. And, you know, taking it down from three, from four units, which is currently allowed to three units, it doesn't seem like a big number, but if you look at the area on my map, I can pull up again, that's 20 to $30 million worth of new construction, number one, that won't happen. If no one cares about that, that's fine, but it's also another 400 high-quality residents that would be frequenting those establishments, which creates momentum in the midtown area. Frankly, maybe I'm living, living in the stars, but I imagine that when people come out here to look to relocate their business, they imagine what their employees' perception is of an area. And if they see restaurants and vibrancy and bars, and they're trying to move a bunch of 20-somethings here, that's what they care about. Those people aren't going to want to live in the suburbs. They want to live where they can walk and bike and have some fun. And that's not going to happen if you take away the rooftops which sustain that stuff. I don't own a single retail business here or anywhere. My concern is to keep the momentum going, not to kill it.
Yeah, and I understand that. I mean, we're trying to strike a balance, because ironically, in the period of time since we up, did this tremendous upzoning through the TOD, we had a lot of, you know, urban homesteaders going in and buying in these homes and settling in in the one and two, you know, the traditional one and two-story setup. So it is a balance. You know, one thing we haven't talked about is parking here, okay? And whether you're at three or four, it seems to me the parking's been so stripped down, the off-street parking with the allowance of, and I hate to even introduce parking into a discussion voluntarily, but it's been stripped down because you can, you can build three units or even four units with only two off-street parking off the alley. Whereas really, the alley, those 50-foot wide alleys can accommodate four cars. And, you know, I, I wanted to ask Ms. Hanson a question. Say I build a big, single-family house over there. I don't, I don't see that anyone's going to do it. And you always, you can count half. Could it be that you could be required to have a single-family house with, say, six bedrooms and have more parking than, say, four units? Are we, are we treating everyone equal there?
Sorry.
Claudia, why, why don't we give you a chance to actually look for that? And maybe go to, we have a couple more council members that have questions. And you can find that one answer while we go there. Ms. Jordan?
I guess I go back to certainly my philosophy, which is promoting economic development and business promotion and, you know, creating jobs. And, and as part of that is making the process, removing barriers and making it easy for, for economic development in, in our city and certainly in midtown. And I, and I see the spot zoning and the SUP process as hindering that. So I, I'm not supportive of, of that. I, I will say that I, I think MF30 is the appropriate way to go with more stringent, maybe, design standards and maybe talk about and resolve some of the parking issues. I would, I would head more that direction. Anyway, while Claudia's looking that up.
Mr. George? Okay.
I do. So in, the parking just reverts to standard code on parking. However, the administrator can reduce it up to 50% with a parking study. That would be an easy change to remove that, since parking is such an issue in this area, to remove that 50% reduction. But to answer the specific question, the multifamily goes by bedroom, so it's two per two-bedroom and two per three-bedroom. Single-family is one per bedroom. So it kind of depends on your number of bedrooms.
And just real quick.
Go ahead.
I know it was brought up to, to reduce the FAR down to .25, and you mentioned that Regional just approved .25 but .75 around the bus stops.
Correct.
So if we went to .25 in the, in the, in this plan, would it, would it be in violation of the regional plan? Or would we have to incorporate the .75 around the bus stops?
You have to have the .75 near the stations.
Okay.
Which is how we have it outlined in the proposal.
The only way around that would be to change the regional plan, which is, which just happened.
Which just happened.
So, okay. And then, what's your thoughts on the landscape issue at 5%?
We have an exhibit.
I mean, but what they showed us, that does look, the 20% does look very cumbersome.
And I think Mr. Carter and I agree to disagree on this item. So we did some, some other exhibits here. And, so this is a .75 with 12% landscaping down here and 10% landscaping here. So just an example. We do count the street trees and the parkways, even though they're in the right-of-way. We do count that towards required landscaping, which pretty much gets you up to five, just doing street trees and parkways.
Like, that's what he showed us.
So this is at a .75, and 12% and 10% up there. If you go to a, I'll go the other direction first. Here's a 1.0 FAR, so you're going two-story here. Parking always has to be off the alley. You've got your parkway, street trees, and this is 11% and 12% landscaping. We have seen an increase in rooftop or second-level landscaping, a request for that. We do count that if it's a public area or visible from the street. We are counting that towards the required landscaping.
He's saying that it's 20% required landscaping, though.
On a .25. So I was going that direction. So here's a .25 FAR. So you can see that's just a quarter of the property on both of these. And this one shows 23% landscaping, and this is at, also at 23% landscaping. And that's just with the street trees, parkway, the required five feet on, that are required, it's required anyway at the parking spaces, and then a couple areas along the side there. And that's, that hits 23%.
Okay, so leave those up there. I just want to, I want to get Mr. Carter back up here just to touch on this a little bit, now that you've got those other visuals.
Yes, sir.
So, you're looking for the, the reduction only on the .25 FAR? Or are you looking at a reduction?
Excuse me, no, we're requesting that the .5, or .25 FAR be incorporated as part of the plan that's approved today.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, those on the landscaping. You want the landscaping reduced to 5% everywhere?
5%, no, we're only talking about the commercial area. Okay, so it's 5%. So if you look at Claudia's plans, we showed the landscaping in the front, which is typically what you do. If you look at this example that she shows here with a .25 and a 20%, is that 20% landscaping?
Is it 23%?
23% landscaping. All landscaping's in the back by the parking. So what have you really accomplished? What you've accomplished is you've reduced the size of the building to the point that it's almost impractical to make it work. The size of the building gets down to, as you can see, 2,500 square feet out of a 6,000-square-foot lot. Keep in mind, the parking has to come off the alley. That's one of the requirements. We have to provide a five-foot access, pedestrian access around the building, into the, into the, to the building, and we have a 10-foot sidewalk. So part of the challenge which we have is we have those criteria, and then they throw in a 20% landscaping on top of it.
Okay.
Yeah, but, oh, I'm sorry.
And then, just real quick, the, the .75, I don't think we can get around that as far as around the bus stops.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. I was unaware of that, but that's, that's agreeable. We don't, that's very, that's fine.
Ms. Sheeby?
You know, I mean, I think we all agree it's important to keep that neighborhood, the characteristic. I mean, we, we've seen midtown come such a long, long way. And, you know, it is really important for the economic development. I can't think of another place in town that is like midtown. So it's really critical that we allow, you know, you guys to come in here and do some really great things. So I really want to be careful about, you know, hindering those things. And, and I agree with Mr. Carter, especially about, you know, the landscaping. I think, you know, as a business owner, you constantly come up with a lot of different restrictions. And I get why they're in place, but I also get that we have to continue to let midtown do what it's supposed to be doing. And part of the reasons why we could do that is because at first, no one paid attention to this part of town. And so it allowed people like us to come in here and, and, or like Mr. Carter, and, and do some really great things. And so I think we have to be extremely careful about, you know, how, what directions that we go into. So you, you were requesting the.
I was requesting that the FAR .25 with the 75% around the bus stops, as was approved by the master plan, that that be adopted as part of this plan, and that the landscape requirement. Now, the landscape requirement is actually not in this plan, because it reverses back to the South Virginia Street corridor. And that, exactly, but we can modify it in this plan, that that landscape requirement be put at 5%.
I mean, I do think it's like one of the only areas where you are going to see where businesses and residential thrive together and continue to build, you know, a community like this. So everyone, you know, I.
I'm ready for discussion.
Yeah.
If I could just correct that last statement, the landscaping is actually.
MF30, I think, is good.
You know? So landscaping is actually addressed in this ordinance. I'm sorry, I don't have the page numbers on this one. But in table 18.08-28, it, the Planning Commission wanted a stepped requirement. So it's, where's the FAR? Greater than FAR is 10% landscaping. .75 to one, I'm sorry, it's 5%. .75 to one is 10%. And then, anything below .75 would be 20%.
Before we go to discussion, I want to give one more opportunity to, for public comment. If there is still anyone who wants to come back. Mr. Radon will take you, then Mr. Gettle will take you. Anyone else that wishes to come back at public comment, we welcome you to do that.
Jenny, you'd had some questions about parking, and I wanted to address that as well. We support adopting more restrictive parking than what is currently in place under this plan, and that would be to match the Wells Avenue. So, for example, we would be with, you know, if we built four, four residential units, all with one bedroom, for instance, we would prefer to have the Wells Avenue plan, which would require five off-street parking spaces versus four, which is currently proposed. We think that that is a good compromise, addresses the public's concern about the lack of parking. But I also find it as another good mitigation member, mitigation method to keep that density to a reasonable level. So that's my two cents.
Mr. Gettle, and anyone else?
I'm very pro-growth, and I'm very much.
Please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Sam Gettle. I'm very pro-growth, and I'm very much in favor of whatever Mr. Radon and they all want to do in the commercial section. I'm only voicing the concerns in the residential section. And to address one of your concerns about the 30-unit per acre, keep in mind that when you get up to the, I guess it's Forest on the map, all of the alleys are substandard, which means they're dangerous. They're, they're only 20 feet wide. So when you have all these projections of growth, you've got all these wonderful old houses that were built in the 20s and 30s from the time when it was divorced. These are wonderful houses. People clamor to get them, but they're built on the alley. You only have 20 feet. And when you have some of the houses with dents in them, because when people back in, so when you interface higher density with the existing old, you cannot do that in that old residential. So God bless Mr. Radon, God bless them all and the Carter brothers, do whatever they want in the commercial. But when you've got to protect Forest going west up to Humboldt Street, where you have these huge problems that need to be addressed. Thank you.
I don't see anyone else attempting to come up and speak again, so discussion at the council table. Mr. George?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm prepared to move forward with the, with the ordinance with reducing the FAR to the .75 around the bus stations and the .25 elsewhere. Reducing the landscape requirement to the 5%. Is that where you're at, Hillary?
Mm-hmm.
I kind of want to hear what everyone else says about the, the Wells Avenue parking standard.
I'm sorry, and the 5% in the commercial district?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, just want to make sure.
Yes. And I prefer the, the MF30 with the, the five, requiring the five design standards that are in there.
Mr. Doggato, do you want to speak to the Wells plan?
You know, I didn't hear that anyone, I really don't want to get into completely rewriting this plan after all the work that's gone into it. I didn't hear anybody other, I mean, I know Jenny had some concerns about the setbacks, but I didn't hear anyone else bringing up any concerns about the setbacks.
I think the Radons did on that.
And typically, it is a five foot. So, what's, what was the rationale of going to eight?
I think somebody just requested it. I think someone just brought it up at the Planning Commission.
And there was no discussion about it? There was no?
There was very little discussion on it.
So was it, when it went to the Planning Commission, was it designed at five?
Staff brought it four to five.
Well, okay, then I'm comfortable with five.
Five is consistent with every other zoning district, pretty much.
Exactly. So, I mean, the setback's back to five feet is...
Yes.
I didn't hear a valid argument for eight.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, that's where I'm at, so.
And to me, the density promotes the retail and the livability and walkability and, yeah, so, to me, it comes back to the design standards. You know, quality of the design is of utmost importance.
And Mr. Doggato, the parking question and the Wells Plan?
Yeah, I'm in line with a lot of things that Councilman George is saying. I'd like to see that parking five for four, and help mitigate further development. I think that'd be a good part for the residents, too, if there's overgrowth in some areas that they need to have parking in order to have that happen.
And I have that table, if you want to take a look at that really quick. I am, yeah. And then with no possibility for the reduction, I would imagine?
Well, that's, that's kind of the main point. I do not see that the Wells is that different. I, here's how I see it, and I think Mr. Carter's diagram brought it up the best, is when you're talking about a back of an alley, it's how many cars can you get in to back in and out? And it's four on these 50 feet wide. I think he has merit in his discussion about that five-foot landscaping strip on the either side, because that gets you to the 50 feet. Your parking space is 10 feet, right? I mean, maybe nine or...
Nine and a half.
Yeah, yeah. So I think if someone is going to get an MF30 and put four units on, they have to put four parking spaces minimum, and not counting it out on the street. So, I mean, obviously, you get into bedroom size. So that's, that's how I would see it on going to 30. I'm a little uncomfortable with the landscaping going down to 5% in some instances. I think in some instances, it's entirely appropriate, but you're pretty much talking about existing buildings where you're built back a sidewalk, essentially. In other instances where, you know, I'll use Mr. Carter's other one, where he consolidated a bunch of lots and built a property, you know, that has circulation and all, I don't see the 20% as a problem. That's what we see city, see citywide. And so I'd like to see it written a little bit, and I think you could get there in terms of, within that five and the standard 20%, make it specific to the existing design sort of makeup. Because I think what you could see is you could see suburban-style .25 development without a shred of landscaping on it, and that's not really the fair trade-off. I mean, I, I think something could be worked there. I think there could be an example found in how to, how to work that.
Any other discussion?
Just a question. With the changes that we're talking about doing, would we have to have another first reading?
I just checked with our attorney, and he said no, as long as it's all discussed during this hearing.
Okay.
I think I'd like to see an ordinance come back, frankly, redrafted if we make these many significant changes.
He said he didn't have to, but you could, clarify.
How long would that take? What would we be looking at then?
Next meeting.
We'd have it at your next meeting.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Either way.
So, take it up? We could do whatever.
I say we need to take this, since there's so many...
Moving parts?
Moving parts that seem to be...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just do it.
Well, I mean, I'll start. I would say that number one change is the setbacks from eight to five. Number two would be a graduated landscaping from five to 20% based upon existing or proposed development.
How do you do that?
Well, I think, I think, I can see how it could be crafted. You know, you've got some of those drawings he had. You have a building that's 75%. You have, because some of the situations where the landscaping changed is where you don't have parkways out in front. And you have situations where you don't have parkways out in front, and you have situations where you do have parkways out in front. So you could almost write it as much of, if you have parkways out in front, then it's higher. If you don't have parkways, then it's lower.
Parkways are required anywhere for new development, and if the sidewalk's being replaced. There is the tiered system in Table 18.08-28. I don't know if you saw that, but that has the five, the 10, and the 20.
Can you put that up?
Sure. So the Midtown District, it's got residential in there as well. Per acre, commercial greater than 1.0 is a 5%. .75 to one FAR is a 10%. And then anything below .75 is 20%. And on landscaping, up to 50% of it can be hardscape.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not like we're looking for that much turf in those areas.
So that's what you would recommend?
This is what came from Planning Commission, and they specifically requested the tiered system.
But Mr. Carter's asking to take it down to 5% when you have a .75 to one FAR?
I think he wants 5% on all of them, on all commercial development.
Yeah, I don't think that's really fair if, you know, you're building a standard kind of development, and everyone else is held to 20%. So I would...
Can we take that motion separately?
Yeah, yeah. Let's go with that one, then, on the setbacks and the...
Can we take with the FAR?
And the, and the general FAR down to .25. And I would also add that window of density in the multifamily, I think that's going to be problematic. I would have no minimum, no maximum multifamily density.
Mr. Carter, did you want to say something?
Thank you very much, Bernie Carter, for the record. I think we need to keep in context where we're talking about in Midtown. Most of these lots are 50 by 120 feet deep. They're not large development lots. What we're talking about for new development would be used car lots that we're converting. And so what you'd want to do is be able to have the same type of avenue that you have, as I showed you in the illustration, where you have continual, wide streets, the streets gaping, and then the buildings. If you go beyond a 5% requirement, then what you're doing is you're pushing it back further and further. And the further you get back from the street, the less conducive it is to commercial development.
On the new?
Right. So I would request that we stick with the 5%. And that's why I think it makes sense. Keep in mind that these are minimum standards. As a developer, we look at not just that, but what's effective. In the, in the Crem property that we did, we put landscaping in from the standpoint of large planter boxes, six large planter boxes, that weren't required at all. So just because there isn't a standard doesn't mean that developers aren't going to do it, if it makes economic sense, and for the integrity of the building.
Okay. I see where he's going. I'd be willing to, you know, see how that works out. If we see one of those car lot turns over, I'd be interested to see how that comes out. So I would include that in my motion.
That would be 5% landscaping in all the commercial district? Correct.
So the motion would be five-foot setbacks and...
Setbacks from five to...
From eight to five.
.25 FAR.
.25 FAR.
And .75 in the station units.
Yeah.
Correct.
.75 at the stations, the 5% landscaping.
In commercial.
In the commercial. And it would be going up to 30 with no ability to count on-street parking.
I'm not, I'm not going to support that.
What's your concern with the being on-street?
She's saying no on-street parking, so all the parking would have to be on the lot.
What I...
That reduces you back down to your...
Which is going to change.
Well, no, because parking's allowed to be tandem, and, and at minimum...
Only in single-family?
Huh?
Only in single-family.
Only in single-family, okay. But what I see is people allowed to build four units, which was a jump from what came up out of the Planning Commission, and only provide two parking spaces. And I think that is not, or is it three parking spaces?
Well, this is the Wells.
In the Wells, you would have to have four, five, right?
Five parking for four units, according to the...
In the Wells Plan.
But you can count, but you can count two of those on-street. And I think you should...
Wells specifies it as on-site.
All on-site?
According to Wells, yes.
Okay, well, that's, that was my motion. Okay.
I thought they wanted on-street. No?
No.
We want it off.
We were off.
The request was off.
Okay.
And note...
I wrote that down, wrong.
And so the discretion, the administrator loses the discretion to count any of those as...
On-street.
On-street.
Correct. And we can make that clearer than this, if you're...
Yeah, in the rewritten ordinance.
So it's five off-street parking, using the Wells Plan.
Yes.
And you know what? The FAR at .25, except for .75 on Virginia Street at the bus, the rapid bus stops.
Yes.
The 5% landscape in commercial, the five-foot setback.
And the 30 units to the acre.
And I'd like to add one thing, because I think Mr. Carter brings up a really good point on that landscaping strip on the back of the parking lots, is that it is tough to get it in, and I think it's going to be a problem back here. And so that when you rewrite it in the residential area for the, for the parking, that we do not require landscape, the five-foot on each side of the parking lot, just on one side. I think that's usually a no-man's landscaping strip anyway.
We hadn't really considered that, up until this point. It had been through the discussions at Planning Commission, it was always the required landscape strips in parking lots would still be required.
But the thing is, if you're putting four, four parking lots, four parking spaces off the alley, and those edge cars get out, they get out onto these five-foot landscaping strips, they don't really have anywhere to walk, and it doesn't, it's, you know, it's just so tight back there. I've seen that.
If there's no landscape strip, it would become a fifth parking space.
And that, and that would enable them to get an extra bedroom on there, possibly. Which, yeah, I mean, I see your point. I just, so you feel that...
We have a motion out. Do we have a second to the motion?
That doesn't include that, correct?
Pardon?
Doesn't include that.
Okay, if we, I think it's disadvantaged, I think it disadvantages the goal of getting four units on, but I'll, I'll say, stay with the landscaping strips, then.
Is there a second?
So is the motion clear?
Yeah, one more time, someone will repeat.
Can we get a recap?
The motion is a .25 FAR, .75 at the stations, landscaping throughout the commercial district is 5%. Setbacks are down to five, and parking is as it is in the Wells Avenue, with the administrator losing discretion to count parking spaces on-street, as is in the rest of the code. And the, and MF30 density, and the range of density outlined in the commercial, from 18 to 30, is eliminated.
And the five design criteria over 21?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion?
And this is coming back for...
Madam Mayor, can I just, so this, this is a, so everybody understands, this is a, since it's the first time reading the ordinance, this is a motion to refer with those suggested amendments to the ordinance.
No, this is a motion to staff to bring back for a first reading.
Okay, okay, so you're going to do it, okay.
This ordinance with those changes.
No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will move on to Item J, Community Development, J1, Regional Business Licenses and Permits Program.
Well, good evening.
Nice to have you back.
Madam Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager, Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the Business License Division. I'm going to have a short presentation, and I'll try to be brief, just because of the hour. I do need to recognize that part of the regional license and permit team is here from Washoe County and Washoe County Health. They've been hanging in there since about 2:00, so we want to acknowledge them. Hopefully, they're all sitting behind me. This is partial, partial group, but we do have quite a large, a large team that's been working on this project. And this presentation is really to give you an update of where we're at. There's some direction that I'm going to be asking for at the end of the presentation, primarily direction to continue negotiations with our vendor for the regional platform that the Washoe County and the City of Reno are looking at. We're also looking at some financing options, and finally, acceptance of the letter of intent that's included in your packet that all the managers and the acting director of Washoe County Health signed. And the goal of this, and I know that some of you have been involved in this process along with the team, but this, this software platform is a regional platform that will be used between agencies. Our goal is to be able to issue a license anytime, anywhere, at any terminal, you could do it from home, and renew your business license. For example, if you happen to have a license that you forgot to renew, you can simply go online and renew it. What we've heard from our customers is that they have an expectation that they should be able to do things online. As most, most of us do, we pay our bills and do quite a bit of transactions online. This platform will allow us to do that. We'll be able to do applications and do renewals and collect payments. In addition, the public will be able to query licenses to actually see if somebody is licensed to do business. And then we'll be able to, obviously, share this information. So the big part of this is sharing this data between jurisdictions. The regional team, which is behind me, includes Reno staff, finance staff, legal staff from both agencies. We've developed the agency requirements, which was part of our RFE process. We outlined what each agency would need. Washoe County purchasing put together the RFP. They put that out nationally. We received about 20 inquiries, which ended up to be whittled down to nine vendors. We selected four of those nine that actually came in and did a presentation for the team. The vendor who is also here in the audience, been waiting patiently, was Acela. And as some of you know, Acela is our, our software that we use for permits and code enforcement at this time in the City of Reno. So we are looking at this, this package. Some of the benefits, and I won't go through all of these, obviously, we'll be able to do things online 24/7. Currently, you can do building permits online. There's, there are some functionalities there that will continue. It's customer-centric processes, so there will be a portal that the customer can access. It'll look seamless to the customer. The backend will be the area that we will, we will work with internally. It'll reduce some of the duplications that we have between jurisdictions. We do anticipate some cost savings. Obviously, when we have one system in place, it will reduce our paper process. We haven't determined exactly how, how much, but we do believe it will do that. We're going to put in place or implement some industry best practices for licensing and permitting. And then we're going to exchange, obviously, exchange this information, and the last bullet there, all the revenue opportunities that we can, we hoping that we can collect revenues a little bit sooner. Obviously, if we don't do this, these are the items that aren't going to happen. We currently have a paper process, all three jurisdictions, and I'm including Sparks. Sparks is still involved, but not in this particular piece right now. They may decide in the future to come on board with us. It's a financial issue for them, as it is with all jurisdictions, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we get going here. The investment for this project, the initial capital outlay is $1.22 million. That will be shared between jurisdictions. It includes the first-year subscription costs, and we have a cost recovery model that we've been looking at, that we recover the cost over a five-year period. The annual funding, which is what it would cost each year, this is the total cost, again, for each jurisdiction, or for the jurisdiction combined, is about $358,000. That cost includes some future contingency funds that we would set aside for future improvements to the system. Continuing with the investment, as you can see, for Reno, this chart shows you the first-year subscription costs, and we have a cost recovery model that we've been looking this chart shows you the breakdown. And again, this is a subscription-based model, which means that it's based on the number of seats or the number of subscribers from each jurisdiction. Our total cost for this project, and this is, again, land management is in place in Reno, this is to include the business license module, is roughly $476,000. The implementation cost, again, $346,000 is the implementation cost, and the ongoing cost for maintenance is $130,000, roughly $130,000. It's important to note that the Building Division already pays a yearly subscription. Some of that will be credited back when we switch to the subscription-based. They're currently paying roughly $150,000, so we're going to incur a savings of approximately $20,000 by going to the subscription model. Also on this, you'll see that there's a standalone for Reno and Washoe County. This means that if we were to do this project on our own and not as a regional project, the additional cost to Reno, to our citizens, is about $148,000. For Washoe County, it's $234,000. But for the total project, by doing this together, we are saving roughly $380,000, taking a regional approach. Potential programming sources, you know, we always look at the general fund. The Building Enterprise Fund can only be used for items specific or expenses specific to the enterprise and to building permits. The general fund obviously has limited funds, but that is one revenue source that we've looked at. And again, nothing has been budgeted for this fiscal year. Vendor financing is really the option that Washoe County is leaning toward. In my understanding, Reno, we would be looking to join with them on this financing option. The payments would not start until fiscal year 2014. It's a five-year subscription, five-year payment. I guess annual payments of five years. That payment would be made once a year. So we are looking at that vendor financing, that option. And the effective rate is so low that it makes sense to maybe go that route. Enterprise Fund, like I said, that's restricted. Regional Technology Fee is a cost recovery model that we've been looking at. We haven't made a decision on that, but we wanted to mention that. We're going to hopefully bring something back if we get that direction. The technology fee or the recovery cost model would be a possible fee or something charged on building permits and licenses to recover some of the cost to repay that capital outlay and then fund the ongoing maintenance. And again, this is a concept that we've developed. We will bring that back if that's the direction to bring back. These priorities or the strategic priorities match what we're trying to do. And as you can see, I don't need to read all those to you guys, but it does align with our priorities, our strategic priorities, the health districts, and then Washoe County's priorities. The team is, obviously, we are ready. We've been working on this. The team, Shared Services Business License Team was put in place in December of 2010. We have, since April of 2011, been working on this to bring this back to our respective bodies. These are some of the reasons and why we want to do this and are ready to do this. So our next steps, and I want to mention that the Board of County Commissioners did approve this at their meeting yesterday. I attended that meeting along with the other team members. They were very enthusiastic about where we're going with the regional project and, more importantly, getting a platform that is common and used between the jurisdictions. So what I'm looking for from council today is acceptance of the letter of intent. I would need direction from the council to conclude the vendor contract negotiations, determine a funding source and lease option, develop an interlocal agreement, which is going to be very important for Reno because if we do the model where we do the funding or the financing, that will be through Washoe County. So they will be the ones that will be negotiating that. And then we'll explore that cost recovery model that I spoke about. And we're hoping to bring this back to you in 30 to 60 days. So with that, I'm going to open it up for any questions.
Thanks, Michael. And you're right, we have been working on this for a long time. It is some of the really good work that came out of the Shared Services efforts. It was kind of the final piece that you all have been working on diligently. And thank you to all of the entities. It's taken a lot of time with really limited staffs at each location. We appreciate it. Questions or comments? Mr. George?
Yeah, basically, all you're asking us to do today is accept the letter of intent and then go back, and you're going to determine these other issues that you've outlined up there and bring those back to us. So I'm okay moving forward today. I'm going to tell you, I think that little bullet point, too, is going to be the biggest challenge, and that's determining the funding source and the lease option.
Yes.
I mean, I think the rest of that's probably pretty easy for you to put together. That one's going to be a little more difficult, I think. So, I mean, I'm okay saying, charge forward and see what you can come up with.
Okay.
But I'm anxious to see what you come up with.
Ms. Shiebe?
Will this integrate with the business portal from the Secretary of the State?
The state business portal, we will have that capability. We have been in contact with the Secretary of State's office, and we have recently let them know that we are not going to try to do any integration until we have this in place. This project will be, once the contract's signed and we identify the funding source, this will be a 12-month implementation process. So at the end of that time, we will be looking at. But the plan is still to integrate at some level with that state portal.
Mm-hmm. Good. Very nice. Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, I echo some of the other comments made. I think it's fantastic, any way that we can do business in our region more collaboratively and easily is certainly favorable, but I, too, wonder where we're going to get the money. But, yeah, I'm supportive of moving forward at this point.
I've heard that from the city manager as well.
Madam, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Breckus?
I'm wondering if when you come back, you can tell us, you know, we have the Acela right now. And I know you need to upgrade and upgrade, but if the Acela works for us and maybe we lose the efficiency of shared, you know, maybe we have to stay with it. I mean, I have a car with 180,000 miles on it. I have it, you know? I mean, so that's kind of my thinking on the Acela, particularly when we're talking about coordination of business licenses. When I saw some numbers the other day of how many business licenses Washoe County has compared to us, you know, it's more of a... They have a lot fewer, and so I was surprised.
Yeah, proportionally, we have roughly 22,000 licenses versus maybe 5,000 or 6,000 in the county. Sparks is the same way. You know, the size of unincorporated Washoe County, obviously, is much less with a population of around 90,000. So it's proportionally going to be less. The cost recovery model is, just to Councilman George's concerns, that is one funding mechanism that could be put in place and that would be paid by the user of the system, and it would be enough to cover whatever that payment cost, whatever that ends up. And that's what we want to, if you want that to come back, that's what we would do.
Yeah, but those costs to business...
And on the Acela point, we're not going to... The current system we have is not going to go away. So we are adding the business license module. The subscription model is such a benefit because of the cost savings of the per seat is so much less than, and I showed you that chart on the savings by going alone. But it's going to be a hosted environment with Acela.
Yeah.
So we're going to realize some savings with that as well. And we don't anticipate a big change in what we are currently doing, and we will see a credit, because we're already, you know, we're already spending $150,000 a year for maintenance on that system. So the addition, you know, the addition of the implementation cost is where we really have to look at the funding for that.
Yeah, because, I mean, I feel like I'd only be willing to swallow an uptick in costs with all our competing interests if we're just about to go obsolete on Acela. I mean, I think that's how tight things are for us.
And I don't know...
I'll move to accept the letter of intent and have staffs come back in 30 to 60 days.
Yeah, and I would like Tracy's here from Acela, and she would like to...
We're fine, we're going. We're good.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thanks again, everyone. And sorry that you had to sit through kind of a long meeting beforehand, but you're familiar with it. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to Item K. K, the Civil Service Commission has pulled until the mayor is back to make that appointment. Urban Forestry.
I have motion to make the two appointments.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Youth City Council.
We are still waiting for a couple of applications.
Okay, continue. How about the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee?
And we are waiting to interview two more applicants, so we are continuing.
We'll continue there as well. Future agenda items? Anyone have anything? I, maybe as a memory, if we don't already have this scheduled, Mr. Manager, please do kind of give us a status report of where we are with the NABs and the kind of the revisit to our community outreach. I don't recall exactly when we said, when we heard you were going to be getting back with us, but I would like for us to get that update. If we didn't already put a timeframe on that, sometime in November.
Madam Mayor, just a quick question on that. Do you want that as a memo, or do you want us to come back and give it as a presentation?
I think as a presentation.
Okay.
Because at least my two NABs are still very, very interested and, you know, want to kind of know what we're noodling on.
I have one, Madam Mayor.
Please.
I'd like to have for council consideration initiation of some cleanup and simplification of our non-conforming zoning provision, non-conforming uses zoning provision.
Anything else? Seeing none. Liaison reports? None. Conferences and professional meetings? Seeing none. L4? Ms. Jordan? Five-year extensions for the open lot parking?
Yes. Fred, can we get a report on this? I know there's been some discussions. Yeah. I know there were some subsequent discussions, though, that were being had about this text amendment.
Yes, Fred Turnier, Community and Development Director. And currently, we have the Washoe County parking lot. That's a temporary parking lot. It was temporary because it was supposed to be redeveloped, and over the years, with the recession and everything, it just continued being a temporary parking lot. And I know that there are some developers around the area. I know Mr. Ken Crater came up to the City Council asking for this item to be placed on the agenda for the City Council to initiate a text amendment to Title 18 for the open lot parking. And essentially, to extend the timeframe that we have, that people have to come up to renew the temporary parking. Because currently, how it's set up is that every year, Washoe County has to come before the City Council and update or request a continuation of their temporary parking. And so I know that there was discussions about extending that timeframe from annually to every five years. And that's what's before you today.
And this is not any modification to the parking structure itself?
This is nothing to parking structure. This is just for open lot parking in the downtown area.
Okay.
Which we consider temporary.
All right, whatever you need from me to initiate it. So initiated.
Was that understandable? We have a motion and a second. Fred, are you clear on that?
I believe we're clear.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion... Excuse me, we do have public comment. Ken, I apologize, do you want to speak? All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, can we go, before we leave the L1 item, can we go back to your item? I got a note from staff on the NABs. Our plan was to come back in December with a six-month update, so I just want to clarify if that...
That would be fine.
Okay.
I just couldn't remember if we put a timeframe on that. Okay, that would be fine. All right. Did we actually, we did take the unanimous vote on L4. Public comment? Seeing none. Motion for adjournment and second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, everyone.